Just sit down. I'll.
Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, August 19th, 2024. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill is absent. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yurin Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. Thank you. There are four of us here this evening. We have a quorum. So we like to start our meetings by thanking staff and for all the incredible work that they do day in and day out to keep our city running so well. In addition, we have a tradition, the employees have a tradition, that they recognize each other through employee and team of the quarter. And recently, they recognized a team of the quarter, and I want to give a shout out and say who they all are, and it was the police field training officers. The field training officers have gone above and beyond to ensure the success of new officers, not only helping them to become competent solo officers, but instilling in them a strong sense of officer safety and a service-oriented mindset. This dedication is critical to the police department's mission of providing excellent community safety, and this is in addition to the work that they're doing on our streets anyway. So we want to thank Sergeant Rob Cleveland, Sergeant Justin Graham, Sergeant Scott Ingles, Corporal Rick Cuddy, Corporal Scott Brooks, Corporal Dennis Prince, Corporal Justin Schrader, Officer Joe Jordan, Officer Brian Patterson, Officer Chris Heinlein, and Officer Jennifer Gamble. So thank you for being police field training officers. It's a way to ensure that we have officers that live to our high standards here in the city. Just two more comments. One is, summer's drawing to a close, and if you don't receive the updates from PD, I'm going to repeat one that they sent, and students are returning to school. So we wanted drivers, many of us are drivers in here, to prioritize safety by slowing down, following the speed limit and being extra careful through school zones that you might have become accustomed to not slowing down over the past couple of months. Also, if you're behind a school bus with a stop sign and flashing red lights, drivers must stop so that students can get off and on. Drivers must remain stuck while the lights are on in both directions on any two-lane road without a median or center turn lane. I have seen people be written up for that, so I wanted to have a public safety announcement on that, a service announcement, so you can be sure to follow those rules. The first day of school for all San Rafael City Schools is August 21st. I'm sure they're probably all wondering, where did the summer go? I'll close with a land acknowledgement. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewop people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Enracharia, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. In addition to those comments, we continue to work with the tribe on issues of shared concern and appreciate their collaboration. I will now turn to the city clerk, who'll describe how people can participate this evening.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is recorded and streamed live to YouTube. For members of the public wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this meeting. Through Zoom, you can select the live transcript button to enable that feature, and if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanafel.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We will start with city manager and council member reports. I will turn to the city manager for her report.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. A few announcements this evening. On Thursday, the 22nd, you can join Councilmember Yurin Scalati from 4:00 to 5:30 for the Quarterly Climate Action Plan Community Forum Meeting, which is held upstairs, open to the public. The agenda will include new zero-waste programs, a sea level rise update, and the city's two-year sustainability program update. We also have free movie in the park coming up on the 23rd at Pickleweed Park. At 7:00 PM, there'll be a bunch of snacks and popcorn and cotton candy, and all city staff are there to meet with the community. And then at 8 o'clock, Kung Fu Panda Four starts at 8:00 PM in Spanish with English subtitles. We also have a big event up in North San Rafael. The Northgate Project is having an open house. The developer will be there on Monday, August 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM inside the mall, the center court area, and there'll be renderings of the proposed project. It's an opportunity for the community to ask questions of the developer team and review the proposed plans. A reminder that the West End Block Party still continues every Friday night through October on Fourth Street between F and G Streets, so one of those is coming up on Friday night. And it's next month, but it's worth noting that we've got a big event in West San Rafael. The Porch Fest is on Sunday, September 15th, from 12:00 to 5:00. This is a free community music event in Gersel Park neighborhood with dozens of musical acts throughout many porches participating. So it's a great event. I am going to defer the balance of my time to our esteemed city clerk, Lindsay Lera, to say a few words about the upcoming election.
Thank you, city manager Lilovich. My name is Lindsay Lera. I'm the city clerk. I just wanted to announce that we did just have our nomination period close for the November 5th, 2024 election. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements about where we stand. There is a mayoral race as well as a district forum race. District One was unopposed, as well as city attorney and city clerk seats, and San Rafael City School trustee areas One, Three, and Five were all unopposed, and they'll have the option to exercise an appointment in lieu of an election. And my final announcement is the citizen-led initiative did have an alphabet number attached to that measure. It is Measure P. Arguments in favor or against were due today at 4:00 PM. There was an argument in favor that was filed, and rebuttals would be due by August 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Porch Fest is free. I don't know if you had said that, city manager. I just want to make sure that we, people know that they can wander there. Okay, I'm going to turn to my colleagues. We have not met since July, so we have highlights of the last month of meetings, and I will start with Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm actually just going to highlight a few. We have a full room here tonight, and I think the, these updates are great, but I think hearing from everybody tonight is more important. So I'll just give a shout out and a thanks to San Rafael Police Department for escorting around for National Night Out. Always a fun evening to go about the community. We did not get to all of them, but tried to get to many of them. And also to San Rafael Fire Department, they've been holding the open houses and trying to make it to most of those. And I keep saying, there's no way people are going to know about this, and I get there, and there's tons of people. So thank you. They've been really great, and that's in honor of the 150-year, 150-year of San Rafael Fire Department. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Picking up the fire stations. I was at Station 52 this past weekend, and they did a demonstration. The people loved it. It was a very popular event. Everyone agreed we should not wait another 150 years to do this again, so hopefully we can do this more often. And I too will give the high-level summaries of the agencies I've been working with. I attended a meeting of the Marin Transit Board representing the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members. That meeting included an agenda item that had particularly influence and impact on San Rafael and involved a parcel out by Highway 580. The mayor was there to testify, as well as Councilmember Yurin Scalati, on the impact that that would have on San Rafael. That matter did pass on the Marin Transit Board. I did not vote in favor of it, but it is an issue that we will be wrestling with during the due diligence period, which will take about 60 days. So we're hopeful that a resolution will be found during that, that time period. Next, I also attended the meeting of the Central Marine Sanitation Agency. That agency is grappling with a broader housing issue and an unexpected turn of events because of some facilities that CMSA has over the hill down by San Quentin where housing is proposed to be developed. We, the board received an estimate of what it would cost to do a feasibility assessment of some changes in our technology that would be required to allow for the building to go forward as it is currently planned. And that feasibility study and the funding thereof has been forwarded on to the developer in the hope that they will fund that feasibility study. And finally, and related to CMSA, I attended a meeting of the San Rafael Sanitation Board. Our primary issue there is moving forward on an operational consolidation with CMSA and putting together a workable contract between the two agencies whereby our employees would be transferred from, currently from the city of San Rafael to CMSA, and we would contract with CMSA as perhaps a prelude to a broader consolidation in the future. We're working away diligently on that contract to work out all of the many, many details that have come to the forefront in that, on that issue. And that concludes my, my comments.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Yurin Scalati.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also have to mention, I attended the Marin Board of Supervisors with the update that Councilmember Bushy mentioned about Marin Transit, purchase of new land to develop a place to store buses in the canal, which I strongly oppose, and Mayor Kate was there as well. So I just wanted to echo because I think it's very important that people are aware of, as the project develops, what it includes. I met with Botes del Canal, which are like some neighbor leaders in the canal with an update of what's happening there. Met with Board Supervisor Dennis Rodoni, which we share our district. I also met with, we had our parking task force. We met, and we have like a new project studying permit parking, which is something that is going to take a long time, and once we have something, we'll bring it to the community. National Night Out was really, really fun, so really appreciate again the San Rafael Police Department, Fire Department. I went to Bay Point and also the canal, and there were so many people, so it was really, really fun, too. And I love seeing neighbors meeting neighbors within the same community, so that was the best. Participated, I'm very happy to do the Dancing Under the Lights, which is the new annual, used to be the Dining Under the Lights, with one of my favorite bands, Neon Velvet, and it was so well-attended. I think that weekend, there was like a big festival in San Francisco, and it didn't seem like it was, because there was, it was packed. So that was a congratulations to the San Rafael Downtown team and, you know, everybody that participated. And then I have, I'm part of the MCE, former Marin Clean Energy Board, and we just had like the executive committee with some items regarding governance. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just round out. I took a bunch off because also want to make sure we get to our agenda items, but did want to take a moment. I'm your representative on the Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit, also called SMART. The June ridership was 23% higher than in 2023, and the fiscal year has closed, and fiscal year '24 was 33% higher than the previous fiscal year '23, about 850,000 riders. Right now, SMART is coordinating with other Marin Sonoma transit operators to optimize transit service on the 101 corridor. This is being funded by agencies and the Marin Transportation Commission. They're calling this program initiative mascot. I'm sure that's an acronym in there, but we very much support how do we have transit be seamless from the North Bay all the way down to San Francisco. In addition, and this will really be relevant to one of our agenda items later on, I represent you on Baywave, which is the local cross-jurisdiction group that looks at sea level rise. We had a presentation regarding the county funding of a sea level rise adaptation structure and decision-making process. More on that to come when we talk about the grand jury report later on tonight. On TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin, if you haven't been involved yet, you can be involved in the countywide transportation plan, and it's just what it sounds like. We're trying to ensure that priorities and strategies reflect a countywide approach and not siloed by cities and towns. We had our second workshop, and that was followed by a TAM meeting where we had a SMART update and then mobility hub update. And then finally, I am part of the 101-580 ad hoc meeting, and that is looking at the alternatives over by the 101-580 interchange. Bellum Boulevard is, will be one of those alternatives, and this was something that was talked about at the council meeting, maybe you were here in April when we talked about it. So there are going to be three alternatives that are going to be looked at by TAM. October 1st is the next step on that, and they have something called a scoping meeting, and it kicks off the environmental process. There are no decisions that are going to be made there. You can give input online, and it's kicking off a process that's going to take two to three years to look at all the environmental aspects of the changes over at 101-580. We participate, I participate along with Chief Spiller and the Gun Safety Collaborative, which is just what it sounds like. What do we do here proactively to reduce gun violence in our community? At the last presentation, we had Dr. John Ma. He is an ER, emergency room doctor at Marin General, and he talked about his advocacy at the U.S. Surgeon General of having firearm violence be seen as a public health crisis. We also talked about September is Suicide Prevention Month. There will be a series of events. If you don't already subscribe to the snapshot, please do, because we'll be sure to have the events that will be supporting Suicide Prevention Month in our snapshot. And finally, I'll close that along with Councilmember Yurin Scalati. We had our Bicycle Ped Advisory Committee, and there's a lot of very robust conversation around Fourth Street Miracle Mile. So when you're driving over here and that really, there's a lot going on at that intersection that's right near the IHOP, really looking at how can we have things that is more, that makes it easier for pedestrians and bikes to get through that intersection? And we will have a Spinnaker Drive out in the canal neighborhood, a traffic calming pilot because people are speeding, and so we're looking at some tools out there to slow folks down and keep pedestrians and cyclists safe. So thank you all. As you listen to our report outs, I know that we have the work on the dais, and it also underscores the work that happens between all of the meetings. And if you heard anything that you're interested in getting more involved with, do contact us, because everything that we talked about are publicly available meetings. So with that, I will accept public comment, and this is on the reports that you just heard. If you're here to speak on an agenda item, if you can hold your comments till that time, but right now, if you have any comments on any of the reports that you just heard from the city manager or the council, now is your chance to provide those. Oh, welcome. Hi.
Welcome. Thank you all for having me. My name is Gina Silvestri. I am from the Gersel Park neighborhood, and on behalf of the Gersel Park Neighborhood Association and the San Rafael Porch Fest Event Committee, I would just like to come and say a big thank you for announcing the event tonight and for all of the support and partnership that we have been given from the city for this event. We've been working for months. Over 100 volunteers put on this event, and we have over 70 amazingly talented local musicians who will be playing on Porch Fest, which is happening, as they said, on Sunday, September 15th, from noon to 5:00 in the Gersel Park neighborhood. We have every genre you could possibly think of, of music. The bands are all playing for free. The volunteers are putting it on, and it's free to attend. So, and we're going to be providing shuttles from the C Street Parking Garage in downtown San Rafael back and forth to the event all afternoon. And I just cannot thank you guys enough for everything that you've done to help us put on this monster event that we're very proud to call San Rafael Porch Fest. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on the reports? Not seeing any. I will close with public comment. We'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be, any items to be held from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Are there any comments on the consent agenda from the public? So this is 4A through 4E. There any comments? Now is your chance. Not seeing anyone. I will close with public comment and bring back to the council for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda.
Second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Bushy?
She said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't hear that. Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Scalati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you. First up, we have a public hearing. It's a proposed camping ordinance amendment and informational report on homelessness, including sanctioned camping program, homeless program contracts, and appropriation of funds. I know there's great interest. We have lots of content, so I shall turn it over to city manager Christina Lilovich to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Just going to make a few opening remarks and then turn the balance of the presentation over to the team here. I first wanted to recognize a couple of guests we have in the audience. We have the new county executive, Derek Johnson, over this way from the county of Marin, who's going to be here to say a few words about the partnership between the city and the county at the end of the staff presentation. I also wanted to acknowledge Scott Embly from Escone Law right in the front row. Scott's going to be saying a few words about some of the legal framework to help clarify some of the issues around grants pass later on in the staff presentation. I also wanted to pause and appreciate this team for what they have been doing over this last year, all the way up until today. A massive operation happened along the Mahun Creek Path, which you'll see in the presentation, but this is a multi-departmental team, the police department, public work, city manager's office, the legal team, and more. And it's really probably touches every single department in the city, and I'm just very proud and grateful for the team that we have here that's out there every day with a lot of heart and a lot of compassion and a lot of energy to try to address all these impacts in our community. So just to set the stage for the staff's presentation, since the last time we gave an update to the community and to the council, there's been some significant changes in the federal and state and local landscape. So just to mention a few, the Grants Pass Supreme Court decision, it does provide an expanded ability to prohibit camping based on time, place, and manner. It only addressed the cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment. The lawsuit that the city has been under for the last year, which is recently dismissed, but we've been in a legal challenge for the last year, was also based on a legal argument around our former camping ordinance being constituting a state-created danger, which is a different legal framework, and that's why we've got Scott here, the attorney, who's going to go into a little bit more detail about that nuanced distinction and how grants pass impact San Rafael maybe differently than other jurisdictions. Until a couple of weeks ago, like I said, we've had a temporary restraining order for the last 12 months, which meant the city was not legally permitted to enforce its existing camping ordinance that was passed last summer. The dismissal of the lawsuit does now mean that we can implement a camping ordinance that exists that the council passed this past April 2024, which includes the, a legal framework for setbacks similar to how we do in our zoning code. So you'll hear more about that from the staff. Governor Newsom's executive order, just to clarify, his state order only applies to encampments that are on state-owned property, so his order was to direct state agencies to address those encampments. I want to emphasize that everything that Governor Newsom has directed the state agencies to do are activities that the city has been doing to the greatest extent that we can, given the legal constraints. And you'll hear more about those enforcement activities as the staff will give you a kind of a year-end review of where we've been and what we have been able to accomplish. How other jurisdictions respond to the changes in the legal landscape obviously impact us here in San Rafael, so we are keeping a very close eye on what other jurisdictions are doing. Just to call out in particular, in San Francisco, they recently started a program called Homeward Bound, where they will provide transportation to another jurisdiction. However, the program requires that their staff make contact with a family member, an employer, or a friend who's willing to receive and support that individual, and they're asking for that in writing. I also wanted to just make note that we have a similar program here in Marin called Return to Residents, and local service providers.
Over 100 volunteers put on this event. And we have over 70 amazingly talented local musicians who will be playing on Porch Fest, which is happening, as they said, on Sunday, September 15th, from noon to 5:00 in the Gerstle Park Neighborhood. We have every genre you could possibly think of of music. The bands are all playing for free. The volunteers are putting it on, and it's free to attend. So, and we're going to be providing shuttles from the C Street Parking Garage in downtown Santa Fel back and forth to the event all afternoon. And I just cannot thank you guys enough for everything that you've done to help us put on this monster event that we're very proud to call Santa Fel Porch Fest. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on the reports? Not seeing any. I will close the public comment. We'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Are there any comments on the consent agenda from the public? So this is 4A through 4E. There any comments? Now is your chance. Not seeing anyone. I will close the public comment and bring back to the council for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda.
Second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Bushy?
She said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't hear that. Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Scudladdy?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you. First up, we have a public hearing. It's a proposed camping ordinance amendment and informational report on homelessness, including sanctioned camping program, homeless program contracts, and appropriation of funds. I know there's great interest. We have lots of content. So I shall turn it over to City Manager Christina Lilovich to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Just going to make a few opening remarks and then turn the balance of the presentation over to the team here. I first wanted to recognize a couple of guests we have in the audience. We have the new county executive, Derek Johnson, over this way from the County of Marin, who's going to be here to say a few words about the partnership between the city and the county at the end of the staff presentation. I also wanted to acknowledge Scott Embleach from Esconey Law right in the front row. Scott's going to be saying a few words about some of the legal framework to help clarify some of the issues around Grants Pass later on in the staff presentation. I also wanted to pause and appreciate this team for what they have been doing over this last year. All the way up until today, a massive operation happened along the Mahone Creek Path, which you'll see in the presentation. But this is a multi-departmental team, the Police Department, Public Works, City Manager's Office, the legal team, and more. And it's really probably touches every single department in the city. And I'm just very proud and grateful for the team that we have here that's out there every day with a lot of heart and a lot of compassion and a lot of energy to try to address all these impacts on our community. So just to set the stage for the staff's presentation, since the last time we gave an update to the community and to the council, there's been some significant changes in the federal and state and local landscape. So just to mention a few, the Grants Pass Supreme Court decision, it does provide an expanded ability to prohibit camping based on time, place, and manner. It only addressed the cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment. The lawsuit that the city has been under for the last year, which is recently dismissed, but we've been in a legal challenge for the last year, was also based on a legal argument around our former camping ordinance being constituting a state-created danger, which is a different legal framework. And that's why we've got Scott here, the attorney, who's going to go into a little bit more detail about that nuanced distinction and how Grants Pass impacts Santa Fel maybe differently than other jurisdictions. Until a couple of weeks ago, like I said, we've had a temporary restraining order for the last 12 months, which meant the city was not legally permitted to enforce its existing camping ordinance that was passed last summer. The dismissal of the lawsuit does now mean that we can implement the camping ordinance that exists that the council passed this past April 2024, which includes a legal framework for setbacks similar to how we do in our zoning code. So you'll hear more about that from the staff. Governor Newsom's executive order. Just to clarify, his state order only applies to encampments that are on state-owned property. So his order was to direct state agencies to address those encampments. I want to emphasize that everything that Governor Newsom has directed the state agencies to do are activities that the city has been doing to the greatest extent that we can, given the legal constraints. And you'll hear more about those enforcement activities as the staff will give you a kind of a year-end review of where we've been and what we have been able to accomplish. How other jurisdictions respond to the changes in the legal landscape obviously impact us here in Santa Fel. So we are keeping a very close eye on what other jurisdictions are doing. Just to call out in particular, in San Francisco, they recently started a program called Homeward Bound, where they will provide transportation to another jurisdiction. However, the program requires that their staff make contact with a family member, an employer, or a friend who's willing to receive and support that individual, and they're asking for that in writing. I also wanted to just make note that we have a similar program here in Marin called Return to Residence. And local service providers have shared that they send approximately 10 people out of the county per year in a similar program where there's someone to receive them and provide support, approximately 100 over the last 10 years. We will continue to monitor what's happening in other jurisdictions. And then I briefly, while I have the floor, I wanted to thank Derek and acknowledge that he's, I think, 90 days in, he told me today. So he's new to the county. And one of the first things that he and I did was we got together and talked about how important it would be for our respective teams who are leading the charge in both of the city and the county to get together and really formulate this partnership founded in this great state grant that we were able to jointly apply for and receive, the $6 million ERF-3 grant. And so we are working really closely in lockstep to make sure we're addressing this as a regional issue, and appreciate Derek being here. So at that, I'll turn it over to the team.
There we go. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Kate and members of City Council, John Stefanski, Assistant City Manager. I'm here tonight with Mel Burnett, our Housing and Homelessness Analyst. And really excited to be here because this is an opportunity for us as staff to come and present a comprehensive update on the city's approach to homelessness. So tonight's presentation, we have a number of things that we're going to cover. And we'll be providing a brief background and some context setting, as well as an overview of the city's approach and response to homelessness to date. For the council tonight, there are two recommended actions. The first is consideration of amendments to the city's camping ordinance. And then the second is consideration of contracts the city will need to enter into for the development and operation of the planned sanctioned camping area and for providing homelessness-related services more generally in the city. So by way of background, as of the most recent point in time count in Marin County, 2024, there are 1,090 individuals experiencing homelessness in the county. Of these individuals, 788 were unsheltered at the time of the count, and 217 were chronically homeless. Now, I'll add that this represents a 2.77% decrease from the 2022 point in time count. But for Santa Fel, the 2024 numbers are not yet available. So based off of the 2022 count, we estimate around 348 individuals experiencing homelessness in the city. But to supplement this work, the city did a survey last year of individuals who were living along the Mahone Creek Path and found that 90% of the people who were living there had done so for over a year, and that 2/3 of those people had lived in Santa Fel for over a decade. Now, the county has had a lot of great success in recent years in housing individuals experiencing homelessness. Since 2017, they have been able to house 737 chronically homeless individuals, and 94% of those folks remain housed to this day. However, as we saw on the previous slide, I think particularly relevant for the discussion this evening, is that there's still much more work to be done as we only have 291 shelter beds available in the county for over 1,000 individuals. So turning our attention to Santa Fel, we're going to spend some time on this slide. Not a year, but we'll be here for a little bit. The city has been effectively blocked from enforcing our camping on public property regulations since August of last year. So we've been at this now for over a year, really. And as you'll recall, it was this council who in 2023 had made amendments to the city's camping ordinance to comply with the then-governing Martin v. Boise decision. And three days before that ordinance was to take effect, the city was sued in federal court based off of the Americans with Disabilities Act, as well as claims that there was a state-created danger. The court entered a temporary restraining order and then later a preliminary injunction that effectively blocked the city's ability to enforce these camping regulations. From December to February of last year and then this year, the city attempted, in good faith, to implement the direction of the court, which at the time, it sought to have the city work with the California Homeless Union and individuals and members along the Mahone Creek Path area encampment to designate camp sites for individuals and establish voluntary compliance with the direction of the court. However, this work was ultimately abandoned because we were not able to achieve the level of cooperation that was needed in order for that approach to be effective. So shortly thereafter, the city refocused its attention towards amending the camping ordinance to address the concerns of the court and to create a regulatory framework that we could ultimately use to mitigate the impacts of encampments. And the city council passed this updated ordinance in April of this year. Following this, the city filed a motion to dismiss the lawsuit. And earlier this month, the court granted this motion, allowing the city to proceed with implementing the amended camping ordinance. And I'll have more to share on that implementation here shortly. However, I will note that during the time of the preliminary injunction, the city worked to identify other regulatory avenues to address the public health and safety concerns related to encampments in the city. As you may recall, in October, November of last year, we enforced the fire code to abate fire risks associated with the proliferation of wooden structures and wooden pallets in encampments in the city. And then in December of last year, the city manager issued an order prohibiting camping on Lindaro Street. And so as you'll see on the slide here, we have a before picture of Lindaro Street and then a picture of Lindaro Street shortly after that order went into effect. And I'll add that for most of this summer, the city has been pursuing enforcement efforts aimed at addressing more illegally constructed structures within our city parks and public rights away. To date, the city has issued 49 notices, resulting in 42 sites now complying with the city's regulations, and seven are currently undergoing an administrative appeals process where they actually have an administrative hearing scheduled for tomorrow. I will note as a statistic of this work that the city has removed over 31 tons of debris as a result of bringing these structures down. And it's important to note that when the city undertakes this work, we provide individuals with replacement tents and other items, and also provide an option for individuals to store their public property for up to 90 days. So these next couple of slides just show some before and after pictures of the city's work in addressing illegal structures and attempting to enforce on our camping ordinance. And so as you can see, here are pictures in front of Marin Roofing along Francisco Boulevard West. Some additional pictures outside there. Here are some pictures along Anderson Drive, some before and afters, and then the Mahone Creek Path as well. So as Christine touched on in her opening remarks, there have been a number of legal, recent legal actions that have changed the landscape by which the city may regulate and address homelessness within the city. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Scott Embleach, who's one of our attorneys who helped us with this. And he's going to speak to the Grants Pass ruling and its impacts on us here in Santa Fel. Scott?
Thank you, John. Good evening, councilmembers. So in the Grants Pass ruling, I think there's been sort of a public perception that, well, the Supreme Court ruled that cities can do whatever they want now, and so there shouldn't be any more homeless people on the streets. Well, that's a gross overstatement of that ruling. The ruling addressed a narrow but substantial issue, but one issue, and that was the Eighth Amendment, whether it violates the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution to forbid people from camping or sleeping on streets unless a city provides sufficient space indoors for them to go to. The Supreme Court reversed the Ninth Circuit's decision that had established that Eighth Amendment doctrine. So it essentially removed one legal argument from the unhoused that are bringing lawsuits to try to establish their rights to be in certain places on public property. But that's just one argument. There are many arguments that have been raised in litigation, including litigation against the city of Santa Fel. As the city manager mentioned, the injunction that has been tying the hands of the city of Santa Fel for a year was not based on the Eighth Amendment. It was based on other legal theories. And because this body amended its ordinance to try to comply with that injunction, we were able to get out of that injunction earlier, just a few weeks ago. But those other legal theories remain. And I guess the cautionary note is the concept that it is now free for cities to take whatever actions a city wants regarding the unhoused population from a legal perspective, apart from the practical concerns or the humane concerns. From a legal perspective, there's still substantial legal risk to cities because these other arguments are out there. There are other arguments that I'm sure will be developed in other litigation. So unless the cities deal with the practical implications of the Grants Pass decision and the day-to-day homeless situations in those jurisdictions, they run the risk of substantial further litigation, which, as you well know, is a drain on city resources, resources that can be better used to try to help the unhoused population. I can answer any questions when we're done with the presentation.
Great. Great. Thank you so much, Scott. So, and Christine touched on this as well, is that the end of July, Governor Newsom issued an executive order that was instructing state agencies and encouraging local governments to prioritize the humane removal of encampments, including conducting site assessments, providing 48 hours' notice, or as much notice as responsible in exigent circumstances, and to provide personal property storage for up to 60 days. And so I just will call out again that the city has been and is currently already doing what the governor's order calls for to the extent possible, given our legal constraints. So switching gears and talking about the camping ordinance that's now in effect, as a reminder, with the Boye lawsuit now dismissed, the city is able to enforce these regulations as passed by the city council earlier this year. And so the regulations include campsite size maximums, as well as establishes a number of proximity and safety buffers, including 10-foot setbacks from private property lines and public utility infrastructure, as well as 10 feet from other campsites. I will add that camping is prohibited in a city within 250 feet of schools, as well as 100 feet from any of our playgrounds. Enforcement of the regulations only will take place after individuals in violation receive notices and the opportunity to comply. And so again, I just want to clarify that it's important to note that the city maintains a standard practice whereby the city first seeks voluntary compliance and works with its nonprofit community service provider partners to provide additional notice and outreach where available, and offers assistance to affected persons, including but not limited to, again, providing tents and sleeping bags. And Mel will know this because she's had boxes of tents at her desk. So now with the camping ordinance in effect, I want to detail just a couple items of note regarding the ongoing enforcement of these regulations. And so I will add that last week, we started with noticing an individual who was camping at the Menzy Slot. But however, this effort's now on hold as a temporary restraining order has been filed against the city, which is blocking us from proceeding. And our legal team is working on that. And again, I will note that the Menzy Slot, which for those who don't know is to the direct west of the Falkirk Cultural Center, falls within a 250-foot radius of Marin Academy. So for Phase Two, this is also now in the works. And so the city last week issued notices to individuals who were obstructing the Mahone Creek Path, in particular, those who are blocking emergency vehicle access. And so this morning, city crews and contractors were out along the path assisting individuals and cleaning up their items so they can comply with the camping ordinance. And so I have some pictures from today's effort of the before and after along the Mahone Creek Path. So looking ahead, we will be noticing all other individuals in the Mahone Creek Path area encampment to comply with the camping ordinance, specifically for campsite size maximums, as well as the setbacks to other campsites and private property lines. And then following this, as we now have the ordinance in place, is that the city will engage in a regular cadence of enforcing and ensure that people are complying with the city's camping regulations. So, and kind of building off of what Scott was talking about, considering the recent Grants Pass decision and the administrative burden associated with the proliferation of illegal structures that are being constructed and continue to be constructed in city parks and rights of way, staff is recommending to the city council this evening that you all adopt amendments to our camping ordinance. And so the proposed amendments include the following. First of which is providing the city greater flexibility to prohibit camping or set time, place, or manner conditions on camping on public property in light of the Grants Pass ruling. The second one clarifies a prohibition on occupying, constructing, and affixing structures made of building materials on public property and to allow for temporary shelters like fabric, tents, tarps, provided that they are not affixed to public or private property except with removable stakes on unimproved ground. And then the third is adding an additional safety setback. So this would require campsites be at least five feet from the edge of roadway pavement to ensure safety and to prevent any obstruction of traffic. So just to note that that's where the pavement ends. It's not where the white line is, so to speak, but actually where the pavement ends. The remaining amendments seek to align the noticing protocols that the city has with those of the governor's recent executive order. So now the city will, under this amended ordinance, the city would issue a 48-hour notice to cure a violation of the camping ordinance. However, the city will require immediate removal or abatement when the encampment poses an imminent threat to life, health, safety, or infrastructure such that exigent circumstances require immediate action. And the city will now provide a 48-hour notice to remove unpermitted structures. And I will note for that one is different from our current process by which it's a much longer, drawn-out administrative process that can take several weeks. And again, just to, I don't think we can say this enough in the course of this work, is that it's, the city maintains a standard practice whereby we work to seek voluntary compliance first. And we work with our nonprofit service providers to provide additional notice and outreach where available. So we go at this trying to take a trauma-informed and human-centered approach first, rather than just coming out of the gate and seeking to just notice people without any regard for them as individuals. And then the last thing that I will add with the ordinance amendments is that we just made a couple definition tweaks just to make it easier and more readable for members of the public. And so now with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mel Burnett, who's going to talk about the, oh, actually, I'm not going to pass it over to Mel yet. I'm going to actually call up Captain Roy Leon of the Santa Fel Police Department to come up and talk about repeat offenders and the police department's overall approach.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the Santa Fel Police Department's enforcement strategies and approach to tackling repeat criminal offenders and other criminal activity. For repeat offenders and criminal activity, the use of data-driven insights to identify repeat offenders allows us to allocate resources more efficiently and implement targeted interventions tailored to their specific behaviors and needs. Our strategy includes increased surveillance and supervision and ensuring probation requirements are strictly met. Additionally, our safety and mental health liaison, Lynn Murphy, will work closely with these individuals to provide essential resources aiming to improve their circumstances, ideally to reduce need for further enforcement. Combating open-air drug use and criminal activity. To address open-air drug use and other crimes, we increase patrols and surveillance in high-activity areas. By deploying more officers, we aim to deter drug transactions and enhance overall community safety. Any violations of the law, either outside of a proposed sanctioned camping program or within a proposed sanctioned camping program, will be investigated and properly enforced. Partnering with organizations like Marin County Specialized Investigative Unit is key. This collaboration brings specialized expertise and resources, improving our ability to solve complex and high-profile cases. It also enhances information sharing, streamlines investigations, and boosts coordination, leading to more successful outcomes. Community engagement efforts. Building strong relationships and partnerships with local residents and business owners is crucial. Community members often observe suspicious activities and can provide vulnerable intelligence by encouraging activities and can provide vulnerable intelligence. By encouraging residents and local business owners to report drug-related activities and fostering a collaborative environment, we can gather information and refine our response strategies. Coordination with the Marin County District Attorney's Office. Regular meetings with the district attorney's office ensure ongoing communication and collaboration. These meetings help us discuss case progress, share insights on crime trends, and develop unified strategies for managing repeat offenders. Together, these strategies will strengthen our efforts to combat crime and enhance public safety. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Captain Leon. And with that, now I will pass it over to Mel Burnett to speak about the Encampment Resolution Fund grant, as well as the sanctioned camping area. Mel?
Good evening. The City of San Rafael and County of Marin applied jointly and were awarded nearly $6 million to address the Mahone Creek Path area encampment through encampment resolution funds for the third round from the state of California. The grant application was submitted on January 31, 2024, and at that time, there was an estimated 65 individuals residing in the overall Mahone Creek area, including along the Mahone Path, Anderson Drive from Lindaro Street to Rice Drive, as well as a previous area on Francisco Boulevard West. The grant's goal is to connect encampment residents to case management, permanent housing, rapid rehousing subsidies, and supportive services to end homelessness. The County of Marin will be contracting with a housing case management provider for three full-time housing-based case managers and one full-time outreach worker. These staff will provide services to the identified grant-eligible individuals who are residing in the areas prior to the January 31 submission date. Additionally, these funds will be used to develop and operate a sanctioned camping area within San Rafael, as well as an interim shelter program to be developed in the future with the grant expenditure timeline. The sanctioned camping area will be developed along the northern portion of the Mahone Creek Path between Lincoln Avenue and Francisco Boulevard West. The planned duration of the sanctioned site is 12 to 18 months, and the site will then be returned to its intended use after the program ends. City staff have planned for up to 47 tent sites to be set up within the sanctioned area, and those will each accommodate one individual per tent. The map shown on this slide is a schematic of the proposed sanctioned camping area. The white line shows existing fencing that will remain as-is, and the red line shows a site perimeter that will become an eight-foot-high chain-link fence. The yellow square showed tent site locations, as well as one security guard station that will be located at each gate on Lincoln Avenue and Francisco Boulevard West. Additional temporary assets include six portable restrooms for residents, that two of which will be ADA-accessible, and there will be six hand-washing stations, one portable restroom that will be designated for staff and security personnel use, office units to be used by program management staff and housing case managers, a designated pet-use area, and designated smoking area, storage container to hold replacement supplies, garbage dumpsters to be serviced regularly, and community meeting spaces for residents and staff. Additionally, at least four fire extinguishers would be placed throughout the site for fire prevention. This map shows the proposed sanctioned camping area in orange and gives a perspective of where in proximity it is to the surrounding community that the site will be located. Development of the site includes the installation of the previously mentioned eight-feet-foot chain-link fencing and new gates added to the entry points at Lincoln Avenue and Francisco Boulevard West. Electrical repairs to existing pathway lighting and increases to provide lighting around security stations, as well as adding power provided to the temporary security and office units will be added. Operational elements of the site will include security personnel to be on-site 24/7, with at least two guards stationed at each entrance, and one to two guards who will be monitoring the site internally. Staff proposed contracting with defense block security for these services. Program management and janitorial services will be provided on-site. These staff personnel will provide direct on-site service to participants through issuing and setting up replacement equipment, acting as additional points of contact for housing case managers, assisting with essential needs of residents, and providing connections to services, even helping with filling out housing applications. Staff proposed contracting with FS Global for these services. Additional regular operations include service of the portable restrooms, regular garbage pickup, and weekly shower service. Participation in the sanctioned camping area will be voluntary, and any unhoused individuals who are eligible yet not electing to participate will be permitted to camp elsewhere in the city in compliance with the Camping Ordinance 19.50. Staff have worked collaboratively with Marin County Coordinated Entry and community partners to identify individuals who have been residing in the Mahone Creek area encampment prior to the January 31, 2024 submission date. Individuals from this identified list will be prioritized for outreach and enrollment based on the following: plaintiffs in the Boyd versus City of San Rafael lawsuit, their VI SPADA scores, length of time residing in the Mahone Creek area encampment, and previous participation in the city's service support area. Enrolled participants in the sanctioned camping site will be required to abide by code of conduct, including a no-visitor policy. Additionally, there will be a no-camping buffer area instituted along the southern portion of the Mahone Creek Path. Why a sanctioned camping area? Due to the shortage of adequate shelter space in Marin County, the city proposes establishing a sanctioned camping area to provide targeted services and structure for individuals currently residing in the Mahone area encampment. The city's service support area successfully connected over 70% of participants to permanent housing. This new program aims to offer greater stability, safety, and enhanced services for participants. We believe this approach will also provide greater stability and public health and safety for the concerned community members, oh, sorry, public health and safety for the immediately adjacent businesses and larger community. The program will include, as mentioned, both around-the-clock security program staff and phone numbers for concerned community members and businesses to call. Why along the Mahone Creek Path? ERF III requires grant funds to be used for providing alternative shelter in the general proximity of the existing unsanctioned encampment area. Local service providers have also recommended that a location within walking distance to food and services would benefit participants and minimize disruption. Additionally, the city lacks suitable public land elsewhere for the program, and the year-long search for private alternatives was unsuccessful. However, we are still committed to finding another location for a future interim shelter project to be funded by ERA. Staff are also bringing the proposed scope of work and contract for Downtown Streets Team services for the 2425 fiscal year. Downtown Streets Team, or DST, has been working in San Rafael since July 2013, and provides employment opportunities, housing-focused case management, and supportive services to individuals experiencing homelessness. Over the fiscal year 2324, DST removed a total of 175,000 gallons of debris from the downtown area, Canal Neighborhood, and encampment areas in San Rafael. In the 2425 fiscal year, DST will operate with at least 20 team members at a time, focusing on encampment hotspots while maintaining regular cleanup efforts in the downtown, including Fourth Street and the Canal Neighborhood. The cost associated with the establishment of the sanctioned camping area will be funded by a $1 million state appropriation provided by Senator McGuire and the County of Marin, along with approximately $4 million of the $5 million ERF III grant. While the county has yet to receive the ERF III funds, it will be able to provide the $1 million from the state appropriation in September pending a board of supervisors' approval. Site preparation and setup costs of the sanctioned site are estimated at $500,000, including engineering, fencing, utility repairs, and necessary assets. As shown in Table 1, the total cost for site preparation, setup, and contract services for the sanctioned camping area is $2,256,500. Staff is requesting an appropriation from the Grants Fund 283 in this amount to support the initial costs and contracts associated with the sanctioned camp in order for the city to begin this work immediately. Staff is also requesting corresponding authorization for the city manager to execute and enter into contracts for these services, as well as for the Downtown Streets Team contract, as shown in Table 2. For the DST contract, the fiscal impact is $200,000. Of this, $40,000 is funded by the ERF III grant, and $160,000 is funded by the fiscal year 2425 general fund budget. This slide shows a high-level breakdown of ERF III and state appropriation funds in total with the sanctioned camping area, interim shelter, and additional grant-funded programs. City staff anticipate a total expense of $5,47,376. This slide shows ongoing communications and community outreach that city staff have been pursuing ongoingly. Staff will continue to post updates to the city's homelessness webpage and newsletter. These will be provided, posted on a bi-weekly basis. The city's webpage has also been updated with comprehensive frequently asked questions and videos detailing updates on items such as the camping ordinance and homelessness response. City staff have also been in contact with the San Rafael City School District to address school concerns and guardian concerns. City staff and defense block security contractors also anticipate hosting regular Zoom meetings starting two weeks prior to the sanctioned area camp participant enrollment. This will especially provide time for surrounding businesses to address concerns and receive development updates on the sanctioned site. And contact information will be provided via QR code on signs posted on the gates outside of the sanctioned area camp and on the city's website, so that people can contact staff for any concerns. Next steps. Near-term staff effort will be focused on ongoing enforcement of the camping ordinance and the development of the sanctioned camping area. Additionally, staff are working to identify a site for the creation of the interim housing solution. Second reading of the ordinance is scheduled for September 3, and the effective date will be 30 days thereafter. If approved, the amended camping ordinance would go into effect on October 4, assuming no legal action that would restrain enforcement. The recommendations are to waive the reading and introduce the ordinance amending San Rafael Municipal Code Chapter 19.50, Camping on Public Property. Staff also recommend to adopt the resolution appropriating $2,256,400 from the Grants Fund 283 to support the initial costs and contracts associated with the sanctioned camping area, and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts in the amount of $2,2,400 for the first phase of the ERF III grant program. This slide shows staff contacts, as well as the city's homelessness webpage, where you can also find a link to subscribe to the Housing and Homelessness Newsletter.
All right. And with that, we now like to invite County Executive Derek Johnson to come up and share a few words on our ongoing partnership with the county.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city staff. That was an excellent presentation, and I just want to thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm here on behalf of the County of Marin. I'm still getting my sea legs here in my new role. And I would say one of my first priorities is really has been to connect on one important issue that I know is all important to all of us here in Marin County is housing and homelessness, and the two are inextricably linked. I spent the majority of my career, most recently down in San Luis Obispo, as the city manager, and we had the unfortunate fact that we had some of the highest-per-capita unhoused individuals in the state of California. The situation was not too dissimilar here, what you're experiencing here in San Rafael. And I certainly recognize, you know, having been a city manager, that it is uniquely different to have homeless encampments in an urbanized area where they're right adjacent to businesses and homes compared to the challenges that we have here at the County of Marin. They are both incredibly difficult, and one of the things that I'm very thankful of having come to Marin County, and I made a deliberate choice to come here, is that there were people that really understood that the issue of homelessness is complex, requires a combination of compassion, and we also need order at the end of the day. And I have been following the evolution of the ordinance here that's before you tonight, and your staff has done an outstanding job of presenting that. The County of Marin, we stand to be ready and to continue to be a partner. You can see from this live presentation tonight that there has been historical partnership, and I'm here to make sure that those commitments are made loud and clear to the city council and to all of the staff. We have a lot of important work to do in front of us, as Mr. Stefanski pointed out as part of his presentation, and as Mel presented as well. There is a lot of work to be done to transition from where we've been to where we need to go to stabilize this community, those neighborhoods, and the individuals that are suffering from homelessness. And that can't happen alone by this city. It can't happen alone by the county. You saw the list of service individuals as part of the presentation. There are fortunately a lot of people that are stand-ready to help out, and I want to make sure that that comes through as well. We, as your city manager indicated, we have had some preliminary meetings with San Rafael to partner. They were very productive conversations. We plan on continuing those. I'm very heartened of what I saw presented tonight and the characterization. And I know my staff is eager to roll up our sleeves and continue to make meaningful progress. It's not going to happen overnight. We all wish it would, and it's going to take time. It took literally decades for us to arrive at the situation that really culminated in the pandemic and post-pandemic, and it's going to take some time to make our way out. Fortunately, we have individuals like Senator McGuire and the Board of Supervisors, and this council that understands the duality of trying to be both instituting both compassion and order. And again, I'm looking forward to be a part of that team. So thank you so much for the invitation here tonight. I'm really glad and was delighted to be a part of the presentation. I'll be remaining for a part of the presentation and public comment and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Kate. With that, that concludes the staff presentation, but we are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. And prior to questions, I know that we talked to our service providers, as they're also stakeholders. So I know St. Vincent de Paul is here. Is now the appropriate time to have her say a few comments at the tail end of that before we ask her questions?
Yeah, that'd be appropriate.
Christine Paquette, thank you for being here.
Hi, Mayor Kate. City council and city staff, thank you for the invitation to speak tonight. I'm Christine Paquette, Executive Director at St. Vincent de Paul Society, Marin County. Our mission is to prevent homelessness in Marin, to end homelessness for folks. We've been doing that for almost 80 years in Marin County, so it's an honor to be here tonight and work with all of you. We really came to commend city staff. I think when we see these presentations, we see this is a tremendous amount of work and effort. It's done in a way that has been humane, carefully thought out. It's been challenging. It's difficult for all of us. But speaking for St. Vincent de Paul Society and all the people that we represent, we believe that we all want the same things, which is to really have an encampment that ends with people getting permanently housed in a safe and dignified and humane way. Our goal is that when we see all of the folks participating in this encampment, that we can add their names to the more than 700 chronically homeless people that we now have permanently housed in Marin, and they're staying permanently housed. So we just want to commend your efforts, really work, continue to work with you, one person at a time, in a way that works for all of us. As Derek Johnson said, it will not be as fast as we would like. Every dollar counts. Taking one person at a time, understanding their situation, their story, and where they need to go to be safe is really important. But I do believe that we can all do that together, and our past work has proven that we can do that well and find success for everyone in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for providing those comments. So now I'll turn to my colleagues, see if they have any questions of staff or Mr. Johnson that's in the house. Councilmember Kurtz, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for the very thorough, detailed report and bringing us all the way up to today. Rounding to the nearest million, probably, what do you think our overall financial commitment has been since we've started working on the homeless? So that's why, I mean, like I said, just round to the million, because I know it's high. And then the other one for right now is, well, I've got two of them, actually. Are we aware of any new state legislation? I'm actually looking over on the attorney's side. Any new legislation that might be coming through with this latest session? And then specifically for And then specifically for our area, if the grant funding is not used, what happens? And then, sorry, one more. Waiting for years to be able to do this. And then in terms of our business community, we're setting this up right near, and the encampments have been within spot in the middle of our business community, and now we're putting, proposing putting the encampment in the business community. And I'm just wondering in terms of our work around supporting the business community, what is, what is being done and what will be done? Sorry, that's it. Okay, that's it.
All right. Do, I don't have the first number yet.
We'll get back to that.
Okay, so we'll get back to the first number. In terms of new state legislation, you know, we are late in the legislative session right now, but I do know that Senator Josh Becker down in the San Jose area is looking at drafting a bill that would require cities to plan for and develop shelter beds akin to how we handle the arena process in determining housing units. And so I know that that's one bill that's out there. I do know, and talking with my colleagues at the county that we have been having a conversation around, that we expect, in light of the grants passed ruling in this next legislative session, that the state of California may look to enact some kind of regulations to regulate camping on public property akin to what we're doing here. In terms of the business community question, prior to this item, Mel, myself, members of the San Rafael Police Department have gone out and met with all the businesses that are directly adjacent and surrounding where the sanctioned camp is going to be. And we had one-on-one conversations with them to understand their concerns with this approach and were able to develop that relationship with Marin Roof as well as Kyle West Rentals and then representatives from Sprouts. And so, are you chiming?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to add to the question about the businesses, as John mentioned, there's been productive, collaborative conversations with the businesses impacted there, and we will continue to stay in contact with them. I think one of the things to note, and Mel mentioned in the presentation, that there will be a buffer zone around the sanctioned camping area. So what that means is the section of the path that there are people are currently camping, that will be prohibited from camping. That's a section that's right against East Bay Tires and kind of most visible off of Anderson. So in order to create kind of a best practice buffer, that will be another area where we'll be looking at prohibiting camping in that time, place, and manner. So that should also, between that and then the security and the program services, keeping it a really safe environment is what we're hoping will reduce some of the impact that the businesses have been experiencing now. Your question about the dollars is a tricky one, but I'll, since you're giving me like a lot of leash on, you know, to the nearest million, I think last year in particular because of a lot of the legal costs we incurred, and the way we calculate this is, you know, staff time, my office, the city attorney's office, and, you know, the materials and contracts that we have, I think last fiscal year, it's about 1.5 million. I think that's what we put in the declaration, and so hopefully without legal challenges, we'll be in a better position to really focus our time and energy onto solving the homelessness and putting staff time and resources toward that. So I'd say it's between a million and a million and a half a year.
And then your last question on the ERF funds, it's, if you, you don't use it, you lose it, and so if we don't spend this money within a three-year period, then the state would, we would have to return it back to the state.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, questions?
Couple of hyper-focused questions. First, in describing the contractors for the site, one of them that you listed was the Downtown Streets Team, which is an awesome organization, thinks that, I think that's a great thing. My question though is about the funding for them. If I understood you correctly, you said that $160,000 of their funding comes from the general fund. Why is that as opposed to the ERF funding?
So, in looking at, when we were developing the general fund budget this year, we, in order for us to use the funds of the ERF funds, it has to have a direct correlation to the services that are being provided. And so, we felt that with Downtown Streets and their ability to help clean up the site around where the sanctioned camp is, that we would thereby be able to allocate a portion of their $200,000 contract onto ERF, but still have the general fund still cover it. And I will add that in previous years, the general fund has paid for the entirety of that contract. So with this money, we're able to defray some of those costs over to ERF.
Okay, so they're going to be doing a fraction. All right. Next hyper-focused question. We heard about requiring emergency vehicle access along the path. Will there still be emergency vehicle access along the path that goes through the sanctioned camping area?
Yes. So we are planning for the gate to provide vehicle access as well as pedestrian access, and we'll maintain at least a 12 to 13-foot minimum width throughout the site for emergency vehicle access as needed.
Okay, now shift gears for a minute to a broader question. What will be your vision for additional reports back to us on assessments, on the need to pivot if necessary and go in a different direction? I guess that would be the overall ongoing evaluation plan. What is that?
That's a great question. I think that we try to use a data-driven approach in surveying folks, so I think that the program staff that we're proposing hiring will be providing us regular data on who's getting housed, how many, you know, what sort of services have been offered, where people on their pathway to housing. So, I would imagine a report back to the council within the first three or four months of the program, just to give an update on how things are going, how many people were housing, provide some input that we're getting from the community. And then ongoing, as John and Mel mentioned, this isn't intended to be a long-term program. It's intended to be a stopgap, a very temporary solution to provide a safer space for people to be and have targeted services. So I would say that, you know, we'd be updating council and the community, like I said, about quarterly as we continue. I think that the long-term vision and the ability to pivot is really important. If it's not working, then we will, for whatever reason that is, we will reevaluate. I think the strategy of using the grant funds to focus on some interim transitional housing solutions, we've not been successful at finding a site location for that, but trying to find more transitional housing solutions, as we know the permanent supportive housing is so incredibly expensive and takes so many years to get online, that we're trying to create safer, more dignified solutions, like some sort of tiny home type village. So if, we've got flexibility in that grant money. We wrote it broadly enough so that if we need to flex or grow something or shrink it or shift our energies elsewhere to a different solution, then we have the ability to do that.
And do you think that you have the authority to make those changes if there's an unanticipated issue or an unexpected opportunity where something that we hadn't thought, a better idea comes along?
Absolutely. We're not required by the grant to do a very specific thing. Like I said, we've written it broadly enough so that, yeah, if an opportunity came up and a site revealed itself and we felt like it would be better to invest in that direction, both for the people and for the limited resources, then we could absolutely do that.
And if I can just add one more on, in terms of the flexibility, is with the security contractor and the program operator that we have lined up, they have experience in providing their services in a interim housing, tiny home village setting. And so if that circumstance were to come up where we're able to pivot and go to that direction, we would have our contractors who would be, you know, in contract, able to pivot over and help us make that transition as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Scullari.
Thank you, and thank you so much for this incredible amount of work that the city's putting together and the partnership is pretty, is amazing. I have two questions. One is a question request. You mentioned, this is like a Mahon, Mahon Path, this is like a temporary camp that is happening. We are talking about 12 to 18 months. I would like to request that we have an end date for, for this temporary camp, so we know exactly when we will have it and then whether we need to reevaluate, but as something that is temporary. And I appreciate in the report, I think that you had in there like the six months update, but like if you have another one for months, I think just, I'm pretty sure that you will all keep a very close eye and see what is the progress. My question, and I don't know if this is a legal question, if someone is offered a house and they refused, what happens then? Are we still okay to allow people to camp? Because by law, right, right now we are talking about encampments because if you cannot offer like a shelter or a house. So I'm just curious to see if you have.
I get to defer to staff because we've evaluated that question and it's an important one to consider. Every question pretty much that comes from the dais has legal implications. I see that we have the police department here to respond to that as well, so I get to defer to Carl.
So yes, we had a brief discussion about this. So I'm a pleasure to be able to stand before you tonight, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Carl Huber. I'm a Lieutenant of the Police Department. I have some prior experience helping set up and manage the SSA, and I have worked very closely with our mental health liaison, Lynn Murphy, who's been very adept at dealing with issues of finding people housing and working with our community partners to do so. And we know that this is not a one-size-fits-all solution, that the individuals that we are constantly trying to help in this endeavor do have specific issues, specific challenges that sometimes housing that may fit one person doesn't exactly work for another. So, we want to work with the person to try to provide them with the specific housing that they need, rather than look at them refusing to accept an offer of housing that may not be good for them and then wind up outside of the sanctioned encampment in the position that they were before. Thank you.
Thank you. Answer your questions? I know. Okay. Okay. I just have one question before we open up for public comment. So, the original amended ordinance was discussed and approved by the council because we are addressing the health and safety call, issues that we were seeing in these very large encampments that were being created. What we had seen, and so my question's going to be about data, because that is why we are here, it had to do with calls for service to police and fire and to the SAFE team, which is our specialized assistance for everyone, which is our mobile mental health crisis unit. So I'm wondering if you could speak to the calls for service in the last year or so that we've had this very large encampment on Mahon Path?
I can speak to the SAFE statistics. I'm not sure if Captain Leon or Lieutenant Huber can speak to the, to the police calls for service.
Or to fire. I don't think we need exact numbers. We're just curious, has it been the same or more? So just, I'm just curious, because that was one of the reasons why the council started this conversation was because of the health and safety calls.
The SAFE team statistics year-to-date are 3,100 calls for service since July of last year.
In a year, 3,100.
Yeah. And what we do know is that a number of those calls were, are obviously, they're dispatched out of, out of the police department, would have been calls that police and fire would have had to have gone on. So we are, the ability to redirect resources and have the appropriate mental health folks on those calls is absolutely, I know it's working. I know Chief Spiller has mentioned that it is relieving the capacity for the police department to do policing work. So, and I think the chief is here, Chief Roman. Do you have any context to fire calls for service around the homeless encampment? We can follow up, and it's difficult to categorize some of these calls, but we can, I mean, it's in the matter of hundreds.
The SAFE data is important. Could you just describe for folks that might not know what the SAFE program is? Because 31 call, 3,100 calls is a lot. Could you just speak to what that program is and who is responding versus police and fire?
Yeah, so it's a mobile mental health crisis unit with a van and multiple mental health outreach workers. People, people, what's the name of the company? People Services that are out of Petaluma, and they do an incredibly remarkable job. They're also diverting calls to the emergency room, and so they're really kind of the frontline call. When the call comes into dispatch, they determine, is this really a safe mental health mobile crisis call? And they've been really remarkably successful. They have bilingual staff, and they've been integrated as part of the team trying to get folks into housing. As Lieutenant Huber was talking about, not a one-size-fits-all program. And just to kind of follow on to your question, Councilmember, the challenge in customizing and trying to get in every individual approach to housing, it can be a real challenge. So it's hard to respond to kind of the binary question, like what would you do if an individual refused housing if they're in the sanctioned camping area? And they say, no, I don't want the housing. That might not be the right housing for them. Now, if somebody over and over and over again says, none, nothing's going to work, then that would be a different, different conversation than, so what we're trying to encourage is a sense of folks that are working on their path to housing, and so long as they're actively engaged on that path, they're supported in staying in the sanctioned camping area. But the code of conduct is something that we're looking at. We're talking to the Marin County Lived Experience Board about that code of conduct, and there may be an opportunity to say, you know, what, what working your path to housing means is that when an appropriate housing opportunity comes up for you, you're going to take it.
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be additional questions and for sure, sorry, infestation of ants, right, for a second? I've been experiencing that at home. Apologize. So I'm going to open up the public comment, and as the city clerk mentioned, we invite you to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in, although you're not required to do either of that, but we do appreciate it, and you'll have two minutes. And please come on down. Go ahead.
Robbie Nelson. So I'm just going to express my disappointment in terms of all the work we did for so long. At the culmination of this, I mean, just within the period of since Friday, you know, two agreements that we made have been broken. One, you got sued again and a restraining order was issued because you tried to break your agreement with Mark to break in your settlement agreement and trying to evict him from his home of the last four years on barely any notice. Not only that, you just showed a picture of Tennessee's campsite. I had, we had agreements. We made agreements that he was going to have a certain amount of space for his campsite, and he was going to have his tent. His tent was 20 by 10. It fit within the parameters of the ordinance. You guys destroyed his tent this morning. I get a call. The tent is gone. That was not part of the agreement that Chris Hess made with Tennessee. And so just all of a sudden, in just the course of a few days, you unveil this, this, you know, sweeping proposal, and that campsite, two and a, $2,000,000 and a quarter for 47 people to be in a campsite, I did the math, for one year. That's about $4,000 a month per person, per month. That's like a two-bedroom apartment to live in a tent, and not even a good tent. It's a seven-by-seven tent. Am I reading that correctly? I mean, why are taxpayers going to invest in something like that if that's how you're spending this, these resources? That we had to get, you guys wouldn't have gotten that if it wasn't for the lawsuit.
Thank you for your comments.
If there wasn't a camp for you to get that resolution fund. So, introduce Mark.
Next, go ahead.
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Mark Rivera. I live at Menzies Parking Lot, Volker Cultural Center. I've been there for quite some time now. I just want everybody to know who I am, the face behind the paperwork. I did want to make one comment on, on the, the progress that you're making over at Mahon Creek. I think that showering once a week by anyone's standard is inadequate. Most of us get showers twice a day. So I was wondering if, if there's, isn't something that couldn't be done to perhaps up that, that rate some, like I said, maybe twice a week? I would, personally, I would agree to that, and I would be very appreciative. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you. And we'll write down all the questions, so any questions that arise will be answered at the end. So any questions that arise will be answered at the end of public comment.
And, and I was, I was reminded to enter this, this document, the temporary restraining order against the City of San Rafael. I could leave that as a matter of record.
Okay, next, someone else like to speak?
Hello, Mayor Kate, council members. Huge thanks to staff for all your work. We appreciate it. I'm Molly Blaveld. I live on Dubois Street in Bret Hart. I've lived there twenty seven years and, um, I am very concerned. I'm very concerned and empathetic for all the unhoused individuals, especially those who suffer from mental health or substance abuse and addiction issues. It's a huge systemic problem in our world. I'm also concerned for safety as a mother, as an individual, as a member of this, active member of this community. I no longer feel safe walking down Anderson Drive. I used to walk all the time into the city. I had to walk down Mahone Creek pathway the other day because I was in a hurry to get from Wild Care to pick up my car. And it was, uh, very upsetting to see how much plastic trash was right about, was in the creek and about to go in the creek. How many chairs and other crap, sorry, have been thrown over the fence? So I appreciate that going forward, there's going to be a plan. We're really containing and, for lack of a better word, it's probably policing and providing cleanup because that's what I keep being told, but it's not happening. Um, but I have concerns about the numbers, how that works. What I've seen in the last twenty seven years is upsetting. I'm going to go down my street to the right and to the left are just masses of encampments that just grow and grow and grow. And, um, when I reach out to you, Mayor Kate, I always appreciate how available you are. So the trash that rolls into the street, all the stuff rolls in the street. I know it might belong to an individual, but some of it's already in an orange trash bag. So anyone who's trying to bike or drive now, I'm not even safe driving. There's also this new thing that happens. Um, cars stop randomly at any time of day and not at the side of the street. It's like the street is a sidewalk now for the encampments along Anderson. So I really appreciate what you have already accomplished cleaning up because that's safety, especially for the students going to Davidson.
Thank you.
But we have so much more to do.
Thank you for your comments.
So this is a good plan, but the numbers don't add up.
Yep, we will revisit the debris.
We'll keep, we'll keep talking.
Yep, we will.
Thank you.
At the end of public comment, yes.
Hi, thank you all. My name is Katie Fleet and I'm a parent and a resident of Gerstle Park. I took off my Gerstle Park Neighborhood Association hat, literally and figuratively. I'm speaking for myself and for my family and the community. Um, my six year old daughter goes to Parkside Children's Center. I haven't heard anyone mention Parkside Children's Center this evening and its proximity to all of the issues that we're talking about. And I think that that's symbolic because we're not thinking about that right now. And we're also not thinking about the Davidson children whose parents aren't here tonight because this is one of two days before school starts, as Mayor Kate mentioned, this week when there's no childcare. So we got word about this proposal on, I think it was Thursday or Friday, uh, just before school started. And as communities connected to Parkside and Davidson, we have had really no opportunity to digest and understand what's happening here and to really understand the reasoning behind what's happening, the proposal, the execution, the details. And I ask, and I've asked in writing and I ask again, that we delay moving forward on this so we can understand the contributions or the perspectives of other community members and of children. I want to let you know that there are over a thousand children attending Davidson Middle School. This is forty seven people we're talking about in this camp and a thousand plus kids. At Parkside, they have fifty preschool kids who are like three year olds to five year olds. Uh, they have eighty to ninety older children in after school programs and summer programs there. This is in very close proximity to this encampment. So I ask that if we're thinking about making changes to the resolution and spending, you know, five or six million dollars, that we really do, uh, think through it more carefully and allow people's voices to be heard who aren't here this evening. Um, I think Governor Newsom's order goes way beyond state property and really does show a willingness to address this issue more broadly. So I think we can think bigger and do more and also consider bigger buffers from schools than we've proposed in this particular proposal. We have two fifty, LA had five hundred, San Diego had two blocks, six hundred. There are lots of ways we can make the situation better. I just don't think rushing into it today is the way to deal with this.
Thank you for your comments and for your emails.
Hello, my name is Kevin Brunner. I'm a resident of Gerstle Park with a six year old daughter who goes to Parkside. And I just wanted to tell a little bit about my experience in the last year. About a year ago, driving down Lindaro or driving down Anderson to turn on Lindaro, there was a crazy lady screaming at the top of her lungs, who was obviously from the encampment, carrying a pistol down the road, uh, walking next to the tennis courts. I ran the red light in a panic, called the San Rafael Police, who went and found this person. Turned out it was a BB gun, but it was not, they told me it looked like a real gun. That was a year ago. Earlier on Friday, uh, I'm walking my daughter from Gerstle Park to, to, um, Parkside for daycare. And there is a thirty year old man wearing a Little Red Riding Hood costume with no shoes, dirty, high, walking along in front of the school that I'm shielding my daughter from. Later that, earlier that week, driving to lunch down Anderson, I travel between Anderson and, and the canal area pretty much every day. Uh, there's smoke coming from the corner and we call the fire department that they're there. I appreciate that, that the sanctioned area with its code of ethics will make sure that people who are, um, helpable might get some services. The collateral damage of this is the people who are, will not conform, who are incapable mentally of conforming, who are high, who are dangerous, are going to be scattered to the other neighborhoods. They're going to end up living in the hills above Gerstle Park where they're going to set fires. They're going to leave trash. Um, so I appreciate the effort to try to reach the accessible people. But if housing, five or six people comes at the expense of scattering the most dangerous people across the county into neighborhoods where police enforcement is going to be much more difficult and all of that, like, it's not worth it. The collateral damage is not worth it. This plan will have more negative impact than will have positive impact. I'm compassionate. I want to help as many people as we can, but not at the expense of crazy, drug addicted, nonconformist, antisocial people living in the hills above my house.
You can, yep, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Lauren McCarthy and I'm also a resident of Gerstle Park. And, um, both I live and work in the San Rafael community. Um, you may recognize my name because I've been in email contact with a number of you about a unhoused woman who repeatedly insisted that my six week old baby was hers and tried to grab her from my bassinet. Um, I would love to say this is an isolated incident of just one person. However, um, these sort of negative externalities happen daily in our community. Uh, just this Thursday, I was walking to work, um, along, I believe it's Albert Park Drive, along Parkside where my son will be going to preschool. And at Lindaro and Albert Park Drive, I encountered a small encampment where there was a lot of alcohol and a meth pipe. I would love to say I'm exaggerating. I have pictures I can show you. This is on the corner of a preschool and across the street from a middle school. I had to cross the street because I did not feel safe walking my usual way to work. Then that afternoon, we went to the farmer's market and another unhoused person came up to the kids' table and tapped my son's daycare friend on the shoulder. That's all that happened and I'm thankful for SRPD to escort that person away from the farmer's market. These are just things that we deal with living here. So I recognize and any, the, and support the need to find housing and short term housing for these individuals, but it is a reality that there is a negative externality from these communities. Um, and the location of this short term housing is going to continue to mean these negative externalities impact our downtown, our preschool and our middle school. And so my family is choosing to spend time elsewhere in communities where we are not having to deal with these situations and wherever we feel safe letting our kids more than ten feet away from us. So for all these reasons, I, I really do implore the council to consider a different location in which we're not going to be encouraging a larger community of the unhoused who do have, um, higher rates of, of mental health issues and, and those sorts of things that are impacting our families. So thank you. And again, I, I am very compassionate and I recognize that the number of unhoused that are in the room today and I wish housing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jason from Gerstle Park. Okay. Um, although there is many, I want to touch on a couple of points of concern with the staff report in the sanctioned camp. In the staff report, it states that the RF three grant that's the city received from the state is going to serve sixty five individuals, yet the sanctioned camp is for forty seven tents. Talking with Lynn Murphy, she said that most of the couples want separate tents in the camp, which tells me there could be as many as eighteen people who won't receive services or a chance for housing, which is exactly what the grant is designed to accomplish. The city was awarded the grant off the backs of sixty five unhoused individuals and the city needs to honor that fact and what the city represented in the grant application. I also want to talk about the residents, residents having due process at the sanctioning camp, especially when it comes to evictions. I don't see anything in the staff report that indicates there will be due process for residents. Seeing as due process is constitutionally protected, the city must incorporate a way for residents to file a grievance if there are, if they are penalized or evicted from the camp. Security guards will more than likely play a major role in evictions and a big concern is if the guards will have the expertise to deescalate situations that will arise. My fear is security guards' words and actions may cause unwarranted evictions. What I want to see from the city is their commitment in keeping people from getting kicked out of the camp as much as I expect the city's commitment with getting housed people, getting people housed, uh, from the camp. Willy nilly evictions will cause people to lose out on services and housing, may also cause the city to default on the grant and will not help with reducing homelessness in Marin, or in San Rafael, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Laurel Holgerson. I grew up in Marin and went to College of Marin and I'm a full time employee of Downtown Streets Team. I want to thank you all, thank council members for your kind words of DST to start. And I also want to thank Mel and to all those in the city departments who work sincerely and adamantly with service providers on collaborative solutions to get our neighbors housed and stable. I want to make a note for the record that as a three year outreach worker with Downtown Streets Team, I can understand one of the highest requested and basic needs to be met is to provide potable water. Our outreach teams spend an average of ten hours a week just distributing plastic water bottles to unhoused residents in the county. I saw garbage, lighting and security were listed as city provided services for the sanctioned encampment plan. I want to highly recommend the city also include a plan for providing potable water on site with those services. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and suggestion.
Hi, neighbors and fellow city staff. Um, I've had numerous encounters. I'm a Bret Hart neighbor and, uh, I can't tell you how many encounters I've had with homeless people, uh, in Sprouts, Albertson Park, um, our neighborhood park. I've stopped walking my dog anywhere. I would, I'd stop down at our park because people in the early mornings were using the bathroom there and you had no idea what they were doing in the bathroom. So then I would park at Sprouts and I stopped going there because people were costing me when I would park there. I could no longer walk on Francisco Boulevard because I was accosted there. It's just on and on and on. I can tell you the gentleman that spoke earlier has one of the cleanest campsites because now I park down there and I feel comfortable around that gentleman because he's clean and he's mindful. But the people on, on Anderson, I can, we can no longer walk there. Just like Molly said, it's so filthy and so scary to be in that neighborhood. I'm concerned though that what's going to happen is that you don't have enough room for these people on the creek and it's going to be so strictly enforced that they can't, they're not going to be willing to live by these rules. So again, as that one gentleman said, they're going to end up back up on the hills. I no longer walk on the hills behind Bret Hart any longer because I've run into homeless encampments up there. Where can we go to be safe? There's nowhere left in our vicinity of our neighborhood. We can't walk to the right. We can't walk to the left. We can't walk downtown in for fear of somebody accosting us along the way. So I appreciate anything that you guys can do to really think about this. How about the Civic Center land? Why not all that land out there? Is there, has, you know, it's not a City of San Rafael problem. It's a county issue. So anything you can do to, to think outside of the box or really expand and get the, get resolution from all the cities. I know I'm very naive. This is the first time I've been to these, one of these meetings. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and thinking and especially everyone here speaking on behalf of, of trying to resolve the problems. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Stephen Bingham. I live in Terre Linda. And before I deliver very brief remarks, I just want to make a comment partly addressed to those who've expressed legitimate concerns of safety and so forth. We all need to recognize that forty, fifty years ago, this country decided to no longer publicly build housing. It's our problem. It's everyone's problem. Ronald Reagan shut down mental hospitals to open up community small houses for mentally challenged people. He never did that and this society hasn't done that. We haven't done what we have to do and it costs billions to do it and people have to be willing to pay the taxes to do it. And everyone who spoke should take that personally and get involved. My comment is I applaud staff for the creation of this campsite, which is sort of a Rolls Royce type of campsite. The thing is, is, uh, one person, Jason, who spoke and someone else, it's basically four thousand dollars a month. Now, obviously, you can't use this grant to house people in two bedroom apartments. But what needs to happen is to bring the cost down so that it becomes a model for the whole country and spend the rest of the money to provide services to the people who are going to live in that camp so that we have a guarantee they're not going to be there after a year or two. And I like the fact that the grant is written in such a way that it has a lot of flexibility. One thing that's missing apparently is staff didn't really reach out to develop the plan with the community the way we did with the PAC, the policing. That needs to happen and I hope you will direct staff to do a much better job at reaching out to the community.
Thank you. If you could wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Lucy Hinesworth with Legal Aid of Marin. So Legal Aid of Marin, we provide the only free legal services, uh, in eviction defense. And we are, uh, we are on the front lines of what we would try to be preventative. Uh, however, the last six months has shown us that we just have no more housing and people are getting priced out. So we all agree that our goal is to get people housed. It's just not available. And, and while I really appreciate the strategy that was presented tonight and it seems almost holistic, it is missing, I think, what is the most important strategy is anti displacement, that evictions are up seventy seven percent since this time last year in twenty twenty three. The majority of those evictions is because people can't afford their rent. And this is seniors on fixed incomes, low income families, persons with disabilities. They are ending up in our homeless encampments. They're ending up in their cars. If now, when I do an intake on a tenant, the first thing I ask them, do you have a car? I am so thankful if they do have a car. Um, at least they're going to have something over their head. And so we really do urge that anti displacement policies not be isolated from the discussion about ending homelessness in San Rafael. It is two sides of the same coin. As much as we create homeless encampments and more services, we are filling them back up again with newly homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak? Welcome. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak? Yeah, welcome.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Stuart Watson. I'm a father and husband. I live in the Bret Hart neighborhood, a father of two and been here for 13 years. The reason I came here tonight is I just want to make sure that the voice, like a couple others earlier, of parents and people live nearby are represented. There's a lot of people that have been speaking here tonight that are members of NGOs from out of town, lawyers from elsewhere, and I just want to make sure that we remind ourselves that, you know, the council represents and supports people that live here. So I would remind people that, you know, it's okay to want nice things for a community, and it's okay to say you can't turn a path to school into a trash-strewn favela. It's okay to say you can't build unpermitted structures on private property. I know we're talking about that tonight. And it's okay to say you can't be here if you do illegal drugs, set your lover's tent on fire, or attack your neighbor with a machete. And it's okay to enforce anti-public camping rules, and we should make it okay to make crime illegal. So I know we're talking about how to deal with the situation, but I really want to urge people to please stop the anarcho-tyranny above-below-the-line behavior, because it is absolutely crazy, the criminal behavior, the drug use, the prostitution that we see walking through and by this every day. And I know we're trying to address this, but like, you know, this, this has to stop. So as taxpayers and citizens, we demand that of you, and it shouldn't take someone like Xi Jinping coming to San Rafael like it did in San Francisco. And, you know, I really want to challenge us to have a higher bar for state capacity. Like, we should not pat ourselves on the back for removing some drug addicts from Albert Park. Like, we can do better than that. And so I want to urge you to remember that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yeah, welcome.
Hi, my name is Colin Taylor, also from the Bret Hart neighborhood, I believe one of the more impacted communities given its proximity to the homeless encampments. I just want to start off by saying that I do appreciate all the effort that is being made after what feels like a long time of no progress. It feels really, really nice to, to have a plan from the city and to see some stuff being set in motion. But that being said, I want to reiterate a concern that I heard earlier from another gentleman, that the, the plan really concentrates on something that is volunteer-based, which is, which is all great, but I, I just know that there's going to be individuals who are going to refuse those services. They're going to get displaced from South Mahone Creek. Where are they going to go from there? It could be other places of the city that they're going to go and end up, you know, causing the same issues, but in different places. So I would, I would very much like for you guys to think about that and think about what the plans will be to address the individuals who do refuse help from volunteer situations. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Yep, welcome.
Hi, Shinji Sakai Egi. Thank you for your efforts, working with the restrictions that you all have. I think it's important to just keep perspective that, you know, everybody in this room, you know, one injury, one sickness away from being unhoused, right? So this could impact us now, it could impact us in the future. We just, we just need to keep things in perspective. In my opinion, the, the unhoused individuals that I've seen just, you know, in, in the city or even around here are, are dehumanized, right? You hear it tonight. You know, I've walked down the streets and, you know, we've seen people cross the streets and do things like that. People don't greet each other like they would other neighbors. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, that what this project is doing, in my opinion, is it's, it's just perpetuating more of the segregation that we already have. So i- if somehow these individuals were able to be more integrated, I think that would do a lot more to uplifting people, right? I mean, people in this room, the prestige and so forth, we, you all have these great jobs, right? Because perhaps because of networks and things like that. And so when you're in a situation where you have this camping situation, those same networks might not readily be available there, right? Of course, I'm maybe speaking from a utopian perspective and unlimited money and things like that, but I, I think it is important to humanize people and to integrate people and so that we all can have those same access and networks that we've benefited from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Tara Evans. I am a 49-year-old resident of San Rafael and Marin County. I'm here tonight also with a different hat as a volunteer chaplain. I started working as a chaplain with the GUBIO Project in the Tenderloin in San Francisco in 2017, and it really taught me a lot of information about what I didn't know about what it's like to be unhoused, homeless, however you wish to assign that category. I think it's crucial to acknowledge the complexities that surround homelessness and the critical role that compassionate service providers play in supporting those affected, especially those that aren't necessarily co-opted by nonprofits or have to answer to the dollar that pays them, but those that volunteer in a capacity as a free agent. I think that tonight you have demonstrated that you are interested in committed to being compassionate and using money that's been given to you to help house each person in the city of San Rafael and also address them in the way that they need to be supported. But San Rafael's newly proposed regulations prevent non-encampment community members from entering this encampment, and this may inadvertently disrupt essential services and support systems such as care from street chaplains, legal advisors, and volunteers. Receiving compassionate care by those coming into the encampment spaces plays a vital role in addressing the multifaceted needs of people experiencing homelessness, including medical care, legal assistance, emotional and spiritual support. It's also a space where bonds are formed, friendships grow, and hope is reborn. For those facing the psychosocial vulnerabilities, consistent and compassionate care is essential for their well-being and the road to stability.
Thank you. If you could just wrap up.
I will. But, you know, all the other people with their fear-based comments got a lot of extra time, and I'd like to finish what I'm saying, too, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The new rules could significantly impact their access. And I think that's imperative to reconsider these regulations that you're voting on and to ensure that those who provide critical assistance and connections can continue to support these San Rafael residents effectively. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, welcome.
Hello, Council. It's a staff. My name is Karen Stroll. I'm the president and CEO of the San Rafael Chamber, and I'm here to represent our business community. I've said this before, but I applaud the effort and lift that the city has invested their time and energy in. This is not easy, and I've been in San Rafael for a long time, and I feel like you're moving the mark to a higher level, so no pressure. But I, seeing that some of the results from the SSA, I think it's, it lends an opportunity for us to be hopeful about the results that we will be able to see from this, from this work. And as we move forward together, when considering the economic implications of this work on both small and large businesses within San Rafael, and of course, with an interest of keeping economic development, business retention, cultivating and creating a vibrant community, I want to emphasize the chamber's committed to working collaboratively with our city and partners and local businesses to achieve outcomes that benefit our entire community. I would love to extend an invitation to convene businesses and host regular meetings with your new partners, the Defense Block Team? I, I think that's the right name. Anyone else who is participating in this, in this work? I think it would be great to be able to have regular, ongoing conversations with our business community. The Chamber is dedicated to advocating for policies that foster a strong business community and contribute to the overall well-being of San Rafael. I look forward to continuing that effort together. Again, thank you for your commitment to serve both our housed, our unhoused, and our business community is, and I just think we should just keep going. Let's keep doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else before we close? Okay?
Good evening, City Council. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Al Vitari. I live in Gerstle Park. I read your report. I liked it. It was read it a few times to get it right. Very, very comprehensive. I made a few comments, I think, on, it's the email got responses back. It was really nice. What I, what I like, what I wanted to say is, one, in general, I find that rights, people have rights, but if you have rights without responsibilities, that's pretty much a formula for, for failure. And what I'm hearing from a lot of people is a cry for, I have rights, I have rights, I have rights. But, but I'm going to say this again, you have responsibilities, and if you don't own up to your responsibilities, then you shouldn't have any rights. So one, I'm not sure how popular that'll be. The, the, the program you put in place is addressing one group of people who are anxious in a lot of ways to get housed, which is a commendable thing. But there's another group that seems to be a source for consternation from the public, and that's the group that doesn't want to be housed, and especially the group that are suffering from drug addiction. And if I remember correctly, the city of, which is a good example of San Francisco, has a system in place for drug court, I think they call it, where if you're a recidivist in drug-taking, then you are labeled as a recidivist and sent to drug court. You're, you're, you're a problem to the community and should be treated as such. You should not be coddled by a bunch of, well, stop, I'll stop there. You should go to drug court and try to correct your problem and, and get over whatever it is caused you to become a drug addict. That's all I have. So, two things.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Getting ready. Okay?
Good evening. My name is Mamu Chirazi. I'm the second-time candidate for mayor of San Rafael 2024. What we have seen in two hours, I have lived through it with the business that I have in downtown San Rafael for the last 30 years. This is not an easy issue to take care of it right away. These are the angry people that they have been asking authorities for the last 34, 40 years, and nobody wanted to listen to them. And here what you get. This is not an easy thing for you to put a date on it, to put, what I'm asking the council to tell me if there is any date that we can get rid of the lawsuits. I don't want to, you know, I'm running for mayor. I get the vote. I want to come in. I just don't want to get the lawsuits. I get the money shortage. I take care of the money shortage, but I don't like to have the lawsuits in my hand. If you can, you guys just work the lawsuits out, I know how to take care of the, the, the issue. It's a, it's a very diligent issue. I worked with these people for the last 30 years in downtown San Rafael. I know what they want, and they all want it from you because they have been asking you for a long time, and you just refuse them. They want it from somebody else, and I'm coming. So you ask me to roll up my sleeve, I'm ready. I roll up my sleeve. I'm a dedicated person. I want to fix this. I love this city. I know it's a big problem, but I do have good solutions. All I'm looking basically is for enough votes so I can come in and, and help the community of San Rafael and put it in the right track. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the council? Welcome.
Hello, West White, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union, part of the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival. I'm also on the lead committee, which is Live Experience Advisory Directive in Monterey County, part of the Continuum of Care for Funding, like Jason Saris, and also the political action chair for NAACP in Monterey County. Here today, I'm actually kind of pleased and impressed that, that you're actually trying to be proactive. But at the same time, what are you going to do with the remainder? The sweeps seem to be happening. You're, you're going to wipe out half of Camp Integrity and not even mention that it's Camp Integrity? That seems like a loss. I think what people need is an address. 400 square feet in a structure, 20 feet by 20 feet of personal space for their family dynamic as well, so maybe even bigger. You're only putting 47 single people in there, so you're forgetting a lot of dynamics in that. And what, what's going to happen? You know, you could reward positive behavior. If, if people are not, if, if the health and safety issues are, are addressed and mitigated, then you should pass them over. They should be allowed to be somewhere, especially if they're signed up in the continuum of care, because one department is receiving money, and if law enforcement is defeating the purpose of that department, then you're actually in a conflict, Civil Rights Act conflict. Need to validate people. They, they need to be somewhere, anywhere, or are you trying to bury them alive? Are you hoping they will die while you're making money off of them? That $4 million seems like economic injustice because it's going in the name of people, but never directly to, and they still have no economic power because they're still living in a tent. And all this money is going to service providers who definitely feel better than you, the other people. And that just can't do. You can't be doing sweeps. You can't get rid of people. What are you going to do with the remainder? How are you going to be responsible with them and redirect positive behavior and reward positive behavior?
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else before I close the public comment? Who hasn't spoken? Okay. Not seen anyone else. I will close the public comment. I'm just going to read off a bunch of the questions, and if I missed any. So these are in no particular order, although I tried to do them in order. There was a question about having more frequent showers. The question about will there be a creek cleanup? There was questions, a couple questions around Parkside and Davidson, maybe schools, both talking about outreach and probably how this amendment addresses setbacks, because there was, this current amendment's 250, one of the speakers said, could it be larger? There were many questions around the development of the amendment of how this happened. So maybe just kind of brief history of how we got here. I know you went through it in the staff report, and I know some of this has already been said, but sometimes when you, it's, this is really complicated. So I want us to go back to the restating. Other aspects of the amendment, if you could talk about the time, place, and manner part, like what the original was, I realize that we didn't speak to that. The presentation didn't speak to time, place, and manner, and there were conversations about that. And we also didn't talk about what our current amendment already does. There was concerns about open space. We know up here that our amendment actually prohibits camping in open space, but that wasn't. So if we could talk a little bit more about the amendment, the current, current existing and what is being proposed. There was a question about evictions for folks in the sanctioned camping area, just the process and procedure around that. And did they have a recourse if that were to come befall them? There were several suggestions around the sanctioned camping area, the possibility of potable water, and is there an ability for volunteers, chaplains, legal, legal representatives to visit? And what does that look like? And then we get into, there's a question about the county property. I think Mr. Johnson had to leave, but we could speak to the county property. The timing of the lawsuits, when they'll end. I just maybe talk to lawsuits and how they land for the city over anything. The reward for positive behavior, if, if that has been incorporated into the program that's being designed. There's been several comments about not having housing or programs. So if staff could speak to 3301 Kerner, South Alysio, and Jonathan's Place, I think we want to provide the full story here, and that San Rafael actually has been providing that. So if you could speak to that. Legal constraints, again, a lot of things, again, very, much confusion around the legal, what Newsom has said and what SCOTUS has said and what we can do here. And then the last one, going back to the county, questions around $6 million, dividing them per capita, and I, I don't think that's, we don't tend to do that. So maybe instead is speak to how much case management services, and I'm sorry that Derek, Mr. Johnson, left, because we do know there's a price for case management per person per year, and that's a figure that the county has given us over and over, which is in the grant. I don't know if we can pull that number out. So again, and then the last, there was a question around anti-displacement efforts, and that's something that the county is actually working on, and I do think it's worth mentioning. So there might be others. I think with that, we will have a lot more information out there, and there might be additional questions from the council after that. So feel free to add anything that I might have missed. and there might be additional questions from the council after that, so, and feel free to add anything that I might have missed.
Let me just, I'm going to do a double check here on my list as well, I think we've got all of them covered. So with the first question regarding shower access and frequency, so, Mr. Rivera was correct that under this sanctioned camping area, shower services will be provided once weekly. However, the city will continue to fund the current existing shower program that takes place weekly at the Ritter Center. So individuals at the sanctioned camp would be able to also take advantage of those services in addition to those that happen on, specifically for the sanctioned camp. With regards to the creek cleanup, one of the aspects of the sanctioned camping area is this installation of a eight-foot fence. And so it's our hope that an eight-foot fence, in addition to security services and program staff who are roving and interacting with program participants, that that would also stop individuals from potentially throwing things into the creek, but also by, on the southern portion of the Hung Creek Path, by having a, a ban associated with the sanctioned camp, a prohibition of camping on the southern portion of the path, that we would also limit the ability for individuals to have their items get put into the water. In terms of Parkside and Davidson Schools, so Mayor Kate, you are correct, so under our existing ordinance, we do not allow anyone to camp within two hundred and fifty feet of a school, and so if members of the community find someone who is camping within a, you know, near proximity to Parkside or Davidson, they need to give us a call, and that we will have a member of our team go out and interact with that individual, and try to get them to, to move along. Under our proposed ordinance, one of the things, and I'll get into the ordinance changes in a, in a moment, but that's relevant to this piece, one of the proposed changes to this ordinance is that for people who are camping in prohibited areas, so this includes the setbacks to schools and playgrounds, but also open space, that whereas under our current regulations, we would have to notice that individual and give them seventy-two hours to move, under the new amended ordinance, we would be able to require that individual to move immediately. And so there is a, if we wanted to go that, to that extent, but in most cases, we would abide by the governor's executive order and provide forty-eight hours instead of seventy-two. So there's a difference in the cadence of timing that someone would have to move those locations. There was a question around offering potable water for the site, and so this was something that we have discussed internally, and is a function of just available funding and timing constraints. So we do not have a potable water access readily available for the sanctioned site, and so we can look at providing additional water bottles and other mechanisms to make sure that individuals who participate in the program have access, ready access to potable water. With regards to volunteers coming to visit, I actually will defer to, if I can get Carl Huber to come up here and, and just discuss what a potential approach would be for volunteers who do outreach and encampments under our sanctioned camping program with a no visitor policy, would we be able to accommodate those individuals either in the program or in the periphery of the, of the project site?
Yeah, so with our experience with the SSA, we had several community partners that came in on a voluntary basis, some also were service providers within the county, and they were allowed access into the SSA in order to provide those services that are necessary to help people get on a pathway into housing, in order to resolve some of the, the issues that they may have with background. We had a, a legal service provider that was helping people clear up their background so that they'd be better able to get into, or apply for an apartment, and remove any roadblocks they might have had in order to make that happen. So, our access control would be to limit the negative activities that may occur from those who are not participating in the program, but also to allow service providers to come in and, and provide services to the, those who are participating in the program.
All right, thank you, Carl. We're collectively trying to get all the, all the answers here on this. So with regards to the camping ordinance and the amendments, so, the, I'm trying to scroll here, and it's not scrolling. There we go. So the ordinance amendments that are before the city council this evening are relatively minor in comparison to the amendments that the council considered earlier this year. The, as I mentioned, there were a couple minor definition changes with regards to camp paraphernalia and camp facility and merging those two together. Moving on, we also just clarified what public right of way means as a definition. Looking at prohibited camping on certain public property, and so this is what we were talking about just a short minute ago on the, the prior ordinance, prohibited camping in open space properties, parking garages, parking, or public facilities, playgrounds, schools, public rights away, and then certain properties in the city whereby the city council or the city manager have banned camping. So Albert Park, Boyd Park, the Falkirk Cultural Center, the Menzies Lot, et cetera. Where a couple of changes have been made in this, the ordinance is before the council this evening, relating to Grants Pass, is we removed some verbiage pertaining to, you know, that ruling. And so we, we took out that language to give us more flexibility to go and require individuals to immediately cease camping in prohibited areas, or immediately cease where there are exigent circumstances when an individual is violating the camping, the time, place, and manner setbacks and campsite size maximums. And then the last thing that I will add, that the ordinance amendments before the council this evening include, that haven't been included previously, is regarding illegal, illegally constructed and unpermitted structures within encampments. And so currently in the past, this was something that we enforced under the city's parks and encroachment codes. But under this new camping ordinance, we clarified that individuals who are camping on public property are not allowed to use building materials to construct any kind of structure, erect any kind of structure on the property for camping purposes. And the nuance there comes with just more flexibility around the city's ability to regulate and enforce on those structures, which we all know have been a very time-consuming effort on the part of staff. The only other changes that we have made in the ordinance for tonight that are different from the previous ordinance pertain to, again, aligning our noticing requirements from three business days to forty-eight hours. Again, that's to align ourselves with the governor's executive order. And one other I just forgot, which is the five-foot setback from the edge of roadway pavement. That's also a, a new time and place restriction.
I just want to add a, a couple of comments on context on why these, why the setbacks and why the camp size, and there is, and, and maybe, Rob, I don't know if you want to take the, this kind of blends into the legal risk and issue, and in the course of this year, and hearing from the court, there has to be enough alternative spaces where the city is not prohibiting camping in order for regulatory framework to, to hold up, if you will. So what we've tried to do with this setback approach and the distances from schools, for example, two hundred and fifty, and the buffer around the sanctioned camping area, we have to be very mindful that we aren't in effect prohibiting camping on all of public property, because that's where, again, a really significant legal risk poses itself. So trying to map out the city and look at all these setbacks, if we go too far, and say we do a thousand feet from the school, then we end up prohibiting camping in areas that could in effect be perceived as we don't allow camping on public property at all. So it's a very difficult balance to strike on trying to right-size these setbacks of the impact on the community and, and having some space for people to exist and be.
I'll pick up on that and respond to a question that came about lawsuits and how to stop lawsuits, and can we prevent the city from getting sued? It's a balance, as Christine's alluding to, we have the need in the community that's presented by the unhoused to be somewhere. We have the regulation that we've already established, and the amendments that are being proposed tonight. And we're doing all of that in an effort to comply with the law and, and try to minimize the risk that we're going to get sued. And if we do get sued, to be able to go to court and demonstrate that we're in compliance with the law. The, the city has been getting sued for all sorts of reasons ever since I started working here seventeen years ago. It's just part of being a city, and we've certainly not been immune from being sued by the unhoused community. Mr. Rivera, you know, one of the first speakers tonight, as he alluded to, sued us again just last week. And so we're now back in court with him again. And, and so I would also echo something that was said by the staff in the initial report, which is that it's not our preference, we would prefer to devote the funds that are expended on defending litigation to helping people in need, and yet with the city sued, we can't not respond. We must go to court to defend the city's position. So I feel in a way it's been an iterative process where the courts have been one of the participants in the process in continuing from both, you know, our local federal district court in San Francisco, all the way up to the Supreme Court of the Grants Pass case, to instruct us as to what the bounds of our regulatory authority can be. And yet, as, you know, Scott Embly alluded to earlier this evening, the, the case law will continue to develop theories that are being advanced against us, and other cities that are, you know, proposing more aggressive camping bans, I believe will inevitably get sued as well, and, and they're going to be exposed to the kind of risks that, you know, have been discussed tonight and that Christine was alluding to. So, we have the folks here, the staffs proposing the best reasonable, logical means that, you know, they, they have to present tonight for the community of the council's consideration. And, and it's all a balance. So that's the best I can, can provide in response to that.
We'll continue down the list here, so, one of the questions was how much does the case management services cost at the county? And so, those are around six hundred dollars a month per individual. And a case manager typically has a caseload of around seventeen individuals that they work with at any, any one time.
Just to add to that, to the cost figures that were discussed, you know, the four thousand dollars a month, and what could we do with that money? When you look at the breakdown of the contracts, we're talking about three or four dedicated outreach workers and case managers, and the reason why there's so much money is that custom, a custom-targeted approach with fewer clients, we can get people on their path of housing faster. And so there is, you know, labor cost is the most significant part of what we're proposing to do at the sanctioned camping area. The, the security is expensive, and it, it is costly, and, but we feel like it's a critical and imperative component to the program, and we've, we're proposing a vendor who has success working with his population and other jurisdictions that came well-referred around that, so they, they will be part of the service provider. Even though they are security, their approach is to become, you know, integrated in the, the services that are provided on-site there. So, there is a large upfront cost to providing that kind of very targeted, customized support for these individuals. I also just wanted to mention there was a comment about how many people are under the grant versus how many people, how many spaces we have in the sanctioned camping area. We will and continue to provide services to all the folks that are unhoused, and some of those grant dollars will be allocated to that, the group of sixty-five that was identified. We don't expect, based on what we've heard from service providers and our own staff, that all sixty-five people will volunteer for one of those forty-six or forty-seven spots, but it doesn't mean that on balance they won't be receiving services or benefit through, through the grant. And I'll just mention one more thing while I have the floor, and then I'll turn it back to staff to finish the question. So this is one is a little out of order, but I wanted to mention the, the comments about like due process and also reward for positive behavior. I know Lynn Murphy was talking with the board about the, we put a draft code of conduct in the staff report. We intentionally labeled it draft because we wanted to hear from the community and from the council and from others about, you know, what, what is the best approach for that, that supports the individuals in the sanctioned camping area, but also protects the rest of the community. So I think there's some opportunities to talk more about what could that look like in a process, and, and so we'll take that feedback back and, and see if we can incorporate that into the programming.
All right, and then just rounding out the list here, so one of the questions was pertaining just to affordable housing and kind of some of the city's actions to date on that. So, in recent years, the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund has made contributions in excess of three million dollars to support the development of Jonathan's Place, as well as the permanent supportive housing that's being constructed out of thirty-three oh one Kerner. For folks who don't know what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, when developers come into the city and they build a development, they're often assessed a fee that the city collects for the purposes of developing new affordable housing. And so when affordable housing projects come along, that's an opportunity for the city to provide this funding as a gap to help make projects pencil and get built. And so we've done three, yeah, three million dollars in recent years for, for those projects. And then the last question I have here is the county property as a site. It's a really great idea, and I can't really speak to, you know, what the future holds for us in, in partnering with the county and using it as a site, but when you look on a map of San Rafael as a hundred and fifty-year-old city that is almost completely fully built out, large, flat parking lots stick out. So, we'll leave that there.
I think there also was a question about anti-displacement, and Mayor Kate, you're correct, our team in community and economic development has been working very closely with the county on some anti-displacement evaluation of the currently existing programs, like mandatory mediation, just cause. And there, there is a big outreach effort happening right now through the end of the year around anti-displacement. And then in our own housing element programs, staff are also working on those and planning a report to the council on progress on anti-displacement measures, specifically in, in San Rafael in the coming months.
Thank you, I went through my list, and I think you got every single one, and there might be, before I ask for comments from my colleagues, I'll see if there are any additional questions that emerged in public comment. Any additional questions? Nope, okay, I'll go to comments. Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
So, thank you to everyone for being here this evening. Clearly, the experiences we've heard from the neighbors, the homeless community, and the business community are real, and we need to do something, we know that. That's why we're here, and we're here today, and we're coming forward with a plan. We received this funding, and this funding was not easy to get. It took a lot to get this funding. We don't want it to go by the wayside, we also know that the right answer is not to write checks to people. I mean, that is an underlying in a lot of these conversations and comments is sort of this idea that if we just write a four thousand dollar check to someone, that will solve the problem. That won't solve the problem, we know that. We've worked with the service partners, we've ta, we've taken a lot of feedback and lessons learned from what we did with the service support area, the SSA. And that has really what's brought us here tonight, and that SSA, I want to say it was twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? Twenty twenty? So, and just to put some of this in perspective, as we've been working on this for the last four years, we're the only jurisdiction we're the only jurisdiction in Marin County, a city or a town, not talking to the county, with a social worker who is part of the police department, whose specific responsibility is to work with the homeless community. We're the only jurisdiction with an outreach safe team, which is a commitment for the work that we are doing. We are the only jurisdiction with a department dedicated to working on homelessness. So thank you. We are serious about this work. Thank you. And I apologize, my phone was going off, and I couldn't figure out how to turn it off. I have 18 years working and working as a volunteer within the homeless community. So this has been my passion and my, I am not going to give up this work until it's fixed. And if that's forever, that's forever. I wish there was an easy and funded way, because I know we would have figured it out if we had that. What I learned more, and I know the professionals in the room here already know this, but what I saw with the work that we were doing with the SSA is that it takes nine to 18 months to establish trust for somebody who's chronically homeless. And that could be, as soon as you have a setback, that clock starts again. And so what seems so reasonable to many of us, just get housing. Just go work with, go to your family. Just get off your substance abuse problems. Sure, but not for somebody who's chronically homeless and dealing and suffering. People do not choose to be homeless, but they get into a situation that that is the only option. And the network and the support that we are proposing with this plan is where we need to go. One other thing, I just want to share last week, because I didn't share all the items that I worked on last week, because I knew I was going to bring it up here. I chaired, I co-chair, but Supervisor Lucan was not at the county's homeless policy steering committee last week, so I got to chair it. And this is a group of all the service providers in the county working on homelessness. And I think 25, 30 people in the room, all working together. That did not exist. That did not exist for, I'd say, four years ago, where everyone was really moving forward in the same direction, including those with lived experience. And Jason Saris, who was here earlier and spoke, was there and actually at that time, said his support for this plan. And so I, he did, you know, he has worked with this community, and he has gotten himself out of homelessness and has been held as an example and somebody who's going to go speak at a conference on his lived experience. And he knows, and that work for him personally took years, years. And I know people in this room worked with him. Also, last week, I worked on the committee with the older adults, homelessness, older adults experiencing homelessness. The grand jury just put out a report around that, and we talked about the responses to that report. And it was really focused on prevention, because we know the biggest population, and Lucy's not here any longer, but, you know, the new up-and-coming group of homelessness are women over the age of 60 who are on fixed incomes and are one crisis away of being homeless. So we need to focus on prevention. And then also, we have the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members that have representatives from each of the jurisdictions. And lastly, unfortunately, the measure, the Bay Area Finance Housing Authority, BFA, this was going to be on the November ballot, which the community would have been able to, it would have gone to the community for a vote to bring funding into nine Bay Area counties to support housing and homelessness and prevention. And that was taken off the ballot, because it was brought up that it was going to be sued, and they came in very, very late. That was going to be direct dollars that we would have been able to use to support us. So all this to say, there's a lot of work going on, trying to work on homelessness and address homelessness. And I absolutely hear the voices and the concerns from those in the community and from the neighbors. I get it. I understand. But we need to work with data, not fear. We have to have compassion and patience, building trust, not resort to quick fixes, sweeping, boulders, all that, or the threat of arrest. Putting somebody who's chronically homeless into jail for 24 hours is going to do nothing. So the plan that's being proposed tonight and the changes to our ordinances, it's a start. It's not perfect. If we came out with a perfect plan, what would that look like? It's not perfect, but it does have the flexibility to continue revising as we need to and listening to you and listening to those experiencing homelessness. And our staff and everyone is committed to, let's see how it goes. What we know is that when we had the SSA, it wasn't perfect by any means, but people got housed. People got housed, and they're still in housing. And there were a lot of factors to that, and this plan is building in those factors with the goal to get people housed, establishing that trust, hopefully not getting sued, so we can't move forward on the work that we want to do and getting people housed. So my commitment is to keep working to solve these problems, not move the problem away, just so it's out of sight, out of mind, because it's not. It will always, it needs to be front and center. It needs to be our responsibility. And this is where we're at tonight, and I fully support moving forward with this plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, would you like to make some comments?
My comments focus on what's happening right now in our streets, to our community, to our residents, to our businesses. That's why I am so proud of the safe team, 3,100 calls that our SWAT-trained officers and highly trained firefighters and paramedics are not having to handle. Professionals out there on the streets, talking to the people that need the help, connecting them with the help that is available. That's the kind of program that's going to solve this problem for our city and for our people, because people want action now, and they have a right to demand it and expect us to bring that forward. That's why I am so proud of our staff to bring forward this with creativity and initiative and repeat initiative. Sometimes it feels like we're just throwing ourselves at a brick wall, and, you know, one judge after another is issuing these ridiculous orders. I haven't even seen the latest one. Yet, we just get back up and come up with some other way. Well, okay, we can't go through it. We're going to go around. We're going to go over it. We're going to pull ball, whatever it takes. But that's what is a lot of this plan, is the pull ball over the wall to try and find a way to maximize the value of those dollars that we've gotten from the government, to bring the maximum value to our people in the streets today, improve the atmosphere for our businesses, and make our residents and schoolchildren feel better about their community. That's why I'm so pleased that we have this way to move forward on bringing change to the streets right now. That's what's great about this program and why I support it entirely. We do need to be thinking, I'm not sure that "helpable" is a word, but there are people who are not helpable. And we don't really have an articulated strategy for what we're going to do about those people. But right now, we've got a reasonable, logical, and orderly proposal to implement for the ones that are helpable. And I want us to move forward with that. Ready to pivot. If somebody comes up with a better idea, let's go do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yeran Skoladi.
Yeah, so this is very frustrating. I've been in Bradshaw for 26 years. And, you know, when I hear like fear, it's like, there's no fear. There's like, it's our everyday, we experience every day. Do I think this is a great plan? I don't. Do I think that is the best and we have the most talented people who have put it together? Absolutely. I really believe that this is a good pilot and really giving like one-on-one customized service, because our goal is to put everybody in houses. I mean, that is the goal, to get them out of the streets, because it's not humane to have them in the streets living like that. It is not humane to have families, kids, businesses to have to deal with this every single day. It's not. So I definitely support the plan. I think, you know, with the amendments and the current legal situation is the best that we can do. Specifically, District One, that's where we have our 3301 Kerner Supportive Housing Development, where we have Jonathan's Place Projects. District One is where we are getting the bulk of this situation within San Rafael. I would love for the county, I mean, I love the cooperation with the county and everything that is happening there. I don't see a lot of cities in Marin County coming up with solutions, which I would love to see. It's very easy to live in a different city and throw money at the problem. So I have to say, it would be really nice for everybody to share more. I don't know how that could happen, but one can hope, always. So I'm frustrated. I'm very frustrated. I think this is a good, you know, plan. I really look forward to the updates and see how that's going. And yeah, it is, again, not okay sometimes to have to deal with this every day. It's not okay. So, yeah, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for my colleague's comments, and I'll just build on what they've already said. First, great work by staff and both the four individuals sitting there, but also staff throughout all the departments, public works, fire, police, finance, library, rec, everybody is all hands on decks to bring forward these new tools, and that's what we're trying to do. We have a toolbox. San Rafael has continued to think creatively, look for new tools in both a compassionate and effective way. We all agree that status quo does not work. The commentary and the input we heard tonight, so thank you all who commented this evening, as well as for the emails that we receive, I receive every single day. We heard from some unhoused folks, this goes too far. And we heard from other individuals that you're not going far enough. You need to do more. You need to have those people, which I don't like to use that term, not on our streets. So we recognize this kind of duality depending on where you are in your personal experience, that there's a lot of emotion and there's a lot of complexity around this issue. It is nuanced, and having the additional lawsuit after lawsuit has really hindered the city's ability to bring in some of these new tools. We are doing that because, to quote what Derek had said, we want to have the duality of compassion and order. And the way that we do that in our society is we actually use legal means to help with the order. And the compassion is all of us working with our CBOs, our stakeholders, to meet people where they are. And I want to be 100% clear, encampments are terrible for everyone. We're all frustrated here. Like, you said it really beautifully, and I just want to underscore that. They're terrible for the people that are in them, the fact that we have people living on the street in tents, the impact on the community. We've heard it tonight. We've all lived here collectively, probably hundreds of years, or four of us sitting here on the dais. And we know, okay, did that make me sound really old? Sorry. Okay. But it's real. The impact is real, and the impact has changed since COVID. I want to name that, too. So I really appreciated the slide that talked about, it was only over the past year. I actually wanted that slide that goes all the way back to 2013, that goes back to when we first brought Lynn Murphy onboard, right? So this is a continuum of efforts, and as we try to get new tools. I'm really appreciative for the folks that have continued to email us and want to learn more. It's easy to show up in this conversation with your preconceived ideas about what should be done and the easy solution. What I appreciate are the ones that are like, this is way more complicated. We want something simple. You know what? I do, too. But hey, let's sit here and have a conversation. Want you to learn about these lawsuits? Want you to actually learn how the Grants Pass didn't release the city from its liabilities? We are super appreciative. I am very appreciative, and I thank every single individual who writes me and say, hey, thank you for learning the facts, because Nextdoor actually does not have the facts. So we have our homeless webpage, which has frequently asked questions. Go there, click through. If it's hard to read or navigate, do let us know, because we're trying to make it really, really robust. Subscribe to the newsletter. This link will go out tomorrow. I don't know if people will watch two hours of a meeting, but maybe they will, if they want to learn more. We did receive emails that said, hey, we want you to wait. We don't want you to take an action tonight. I have to tell you, I am so tired of waiting to take action. We waited a year. We had a lawsuit that was lifted 10 days ago, so we are able to move forward. So I don't want us to wait anymore. And yes, we had another lawsuit that was brought forward on Friday, but it still enables us to implement our ordinance. That is, to this point, a very small portion of the lesson. It's not addressing all of our amendments. And I'll just close by saying, I was really appreciative. And for folks that don't hang out in the policy world, let me just underscore how amazing it was that the county administrator was here at our meeting. That has never happened before, never happened before. He was here because he knows what we're facing here in San Rafael. So when I hear the partnership and the collaboration, of course, we're going to hold them to it, but you know what? I'm going to believe the guy. I'm going to believe the guy that he's going to show up for us. And when he stands in front of us and says, San Rafael can't do it alone, and that we have to have compassionate order, I literally want to jump up and raise the roof, because I've never heard that. And like Councilwoman Kurtz, I've been working on this issue with the county, looking for properties for over a decade. So I'm very, very heartened and really appreciate staff continuing to work with them. So I'm an optimistic person, so I'm going to bring that optimism and close on that. And we're going to continue. I hope what you hear as you take away this evening is that there's not one easy answer. This council, this staff, and our community is actually committed to finding compassionate and effective solutions that go forward. We want the same thing. I think we all know status quo is not okay. So we appreciate you turning out tonight. I appreciate the staff and what they've put forward. And I would like the additional amendments. I have heard that just in conversation, but we need to have the official motions, both around the amendment additions that were discussed by staff more than once, as well as the allocation of the grant funding, which needs to be expended within three years to start to go towards a sanctioned camping area. So I will turn to Councilwoman Kurtz. Do you want to go ahead?
So I just want to confirm. So it's I, 5A, I?
No.
5A1?
No, you wave. You need to say this.
Which one is, let's see, wave further reading?
Yep.
Excellent. I'd like to make a motion, wave further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. Madam Speaker, could you read the title of the ordinance?
An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Rafael Amending Chapter 19.50 to the San Rafael Municipal Code Entitled Camping on Public Property: Regulating Camping on Public Property Within the City of San Rafael.
Thank you. Motion on the second item.
Okay, make a motion. Adopt the resolution appropriating $2,256,400 from the Grants Fund 283 to support the initial costs and contracts associated with the sanctioned camp program and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts in the amount of $2,2,400 for the first phase of the Encampment Resolution Fund Round 3, ERF 3, Grant Program and Other Homelessness Program Services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. That concludes this agenda item. We are going to take a five-minute break, so folks who might not want to stay for, we have a lot of other good stuff coming. So I encourage you to stay, but if you don't want to, we will convene again at 8:40, 8:50. so I encourage you to stay, but if you don't want to, uh, we will convene again at eight forty, eight fifty. Thank you, thank you. It's a, it's, uh, we have several amazing agenda items that remain on our agenda and, and the council did a couple jumping jacks and we are all ready to, uh, tackle those. We are bright eyed and bushy tailed. Okay. The next item is amendments to Chapter fifteen point one five five, Urban Lot Splits, and Chapter fifteen point oh three, Minor Subdivisions for or Fewer Lots of the San Rafael Municipal Code. And talk about how, this, this is one of the agendas tonight that we are, lots of different topics. So, D P W, welcome, Assistant D P W Director Joanna Far.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, as Mayor Kate mentioned, I'm Joanna, Assistant Public Works Director with San Rafael. And tonight I will be, um, providing some background on Chapter fifteen point one five five of the municipal code on urban lot splits. Um, talking about why we're proposing an update, staff recommendation, and then opening for questions. Um, this chapter of the municipal code contains procedures and objective design, development standards um, to implement the, um, Government Code Section six six four one one point seven, which is the urban lot split component of Senate Bill Nine. Um, this chapter was added to Title Fifteen of, um, the municipal code in August twenty twenty-two, right after the Senate Bill S B nine, um, the California Home Act became effective in January, um, twenty twenty-two. We've received several applications for urban lot splits since then and through, um, combination of community development and public works staff, we've recognized, um, the need to make some updates to help clarify the application process, um, starting with, um, including an tentative map, um, submission and review by community development and other city staff. Once that's been approved, then we would, um, get into, um, step two, which is the parcel map, um, submission by applicant, which would then, um, go through a review by city staff and ultimately approved through public works. Um, this ensures that, um, urban lot splits are consistent with other city process, um, processes for other types of minor subdivisions. Um, this also ensures the, that documents are submitted in the proper, um, procedure and order so that applicants get verification that their project does meet the objective development standards before they invest more resources and time into developing technical engineering calculations and mapping. Um, this helps reduce the burden on applicants and also benefits, um, city staff by making sure our, um, resources are also streamlined to reviewing documents, um, that should be submitted. We're also looking to ensure that, um, we're complying with the S B nine code along with our, um, adopted Chapter fifteen point one five five. Um, in order to get that, um, get to that point, um, community development and public work staff has worked together to bring forth this recommendation to amend Chapter fifteen point five five to add requirements of tentative map, signed affidavits and a restrictive covenant and agreement for the parcel map. Um, additionally, uh, further amending Chapter fifteen oh three for minor subdivisions to clarify that urban lot splits, um, or the applications for them are to be revealed, um, ministerially. Um, these recommendations will help clarify and improve the procedures for cities' implementation of urban lot splits. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I'll see if there are questions by council, uh, Councilwoman Kurtz.
Just a real quick question. You mentioned that we've received a number of applications. How, what is the number? Is, like, ten to twenty? Is it over twenty? Is it five?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm actually also joined here with my, uh, director, Micah.
I'd say less than six.
Oh, okay.
But, but to the, you know, to the point about like why we're bringing forward these amendments is really just clarity. Um, particularly when they come in with a map action, a lot of technical drawings in there, but they haven't really cleared, kind of like, should, do you even meet the thresholds of S B nine? So by having a split process allows the technical pieces to be, uh, kind of gone through before they spend the time and effort for a final map, which has all the detailed drawings of where everything goes. So we can kind of, um, provide a little better direction and clarity to the, uh, S B nine applicants.
Great, thank you. And just one other question. At what point in that process would it go to planning?
The very first one, it first comes in with the tentative map along with any other triggered permits that are required. Um, and that's, that's when we have the opportunity to view this for compliance of S B nine.
Thank you.
You have to recall though, uh, it is a ministerial act, so if you actually meet those provisions and you can actually get administrative approval. Uh, but the subdivision is definitely one of those things that need to be very, um, clear and decisive. So, um, and as I said, it's, it's one of the awesome implementation measures from the state laws. We want to make sure that we are very clear and decisive about how to actually do.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yeah, Councilmember Yeran Skoladi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm looking at some of the, um, limitations and it says housing that is subject to rent control through valid local rent control provisions. I'm just wondering, um, hypothetically, you can have one parcel and splitting it in two, where you can keep one and sell the other one?
Um, correct. Um, you know, as part of the requirement, the primary, one of them has to remain the primary, primary resident for, um, at least three years, I believe, and the other one could, but the other one can't be sold off.
I see. So if you had like a rental controlled housing and you want to split it in two and build another house on the other one, as long as you are like the owner, you could do that, but you couldn't sell the parcel to somebody else. Sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
I appreciate the questions, but I will say that it depends. I mean, those are the compliance checklist we go through to make sure you're compliant with those regulations. And it really is hard on the hypotheticals, but it's, you know, there are certain provisions of the rent control. That's why we have the affidavits that are required for clarification that you meet the provisions of the, of the ordinance along with state law. So, and that's why we rely on the city attorney's office for support on some of these ones to get more technical. Um, also the ability to not subdivide again, right? So it's, it's an urban lot split, so let's just do it one time versus three.
Hmm, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, so we'll open it up to public comment on this item. Anyone like to speak to the council on this item? Not seen anyone. I'll close the public comment, um, unless, if there are any additional questions. So I'll, um, quick comments on this item prior to a motion?
Yep, just devils in the detail.
Okay. Go ahead and make a motion, Mary Beth, or?
Uh, a, a, a quick comment on that, this is really important, that it be done correctly. Um, and doing it in a two-step process, making it as easy as possible to get it correctly, um, completed so that we don't create problems in the future, because some of these lot splits are going to be very small and details are definitely going to matter. So excellent, um, uh, refinement of our existing regulations. And I am, I, I move that we waive for the reading of the ordinance, no, wait, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Nope, yes, I am. Waive further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Hi.
Councilmember Yeran Skoladi.
Hi.
Mayor Kate.
I. That motion carries four zero. Madam City Clerk, if you could read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Rafael amending Chapter fifteen point one five five, Urban Lot Splits, and Chapter fifteen point zero three, Minor Subdivisions for or Fewer Lots, of Title Fifteen, Subdivisions of the San Rafael Municipal Code to clarify and improve the procedure for implementation of Government Code Section six six four one one point seven, Senate Bill Nine, related to urban lot splits.
Thank you. That concludes that agenda item. We are, next one. Uh, we're moving on to the response to the grand jury report on sea level rise. Welcome, Kate. Get the green light going. Okay, there you go.
Good evening and thank you, uh, for, um, the opportunity to bring this before you. Um, I'm going to share just a little bit about the sea level rise, uh, response, proposed response to the grand jury report, as well as, um, just one minute of context, uh, as a bit of background for that response. I have slides, um, which, uh, are here and let me just make sure I'm presenting. Fantastic. Okay, great. So I'll try and be very brief with the one minute of context, just to give a bit of background on the issue. So, um, the city of San Rafael is the most vulnerable community in the Bay Area to sea level rise. Uh, we already see the impacts in many communities, of course. Um, and we're already working as part of a collaborative with our CBO partners, Canal Alliance and the Multicultural Center, Marin, as well as the county and, um, professors at U C Berkeley. Fortunately, we have, um, several grants in hand that are helping facilitate that planning process. And the stage that we're at right now is building on the many studies and many years of great work that the city has already done to understand the issue and build upon that and look in more depth at the feasible ways that we can respond here to the risks locally. Design and construction would come later. Um, so just very briefly, uh, we have technical consultants that are working, um, for, uh, our collaborative right now, exploring those adaptation options and, and doing quite a bit of community engagement around the issue. So right now we're focused on a subset of the city, the sort of landscape unit, kind of like a watershed between Point San Pedro and Point San Quentin, looking at the areas in blue that are vulnerable to sea level rise with a focus of directing extra effort to engage the residents who live in this, um, red area, the primary engagement area, in part because it's the most vulnerable to sea level rise, but in part also because we have so many residents, uh, that live there and because of the historic issues, um, with engaging, um, and their, uh, participation in planning process. We're trying to do, um, an equity-centered approach to the engagement, um, for our most, uh, exposed residents. Our current planning process, though, is just one of a constellation of sea level rise planning processes that are ongoing. Uh, we're participating in many of those, with B C D C, M T C A BAG, TAM, the county, et cetera. Um, most relevance is the work that the- Most relevance is the work that the county is doing at the same time. So the county has hired a consultant, ACOM, to help them look at what is the best way to approach the issue of sea level rise from a governance perspective. So. The tasks that their consultants are working on are looking at alternative governance structures to address the issue of sea level rise. And after extensive engagement here in Marin and with many stakeholders to recommend a preferred governance structure. That work will not be concluded until the spring of 2025. But we're participating in that process and have quite a lot of ability to help shape it and, and be a part of it. But so that is the, the quick recap of the background. To pivot now to the grand jury report itself. It was released at the end of May and, and highlighted the urgency and the extensive impacts that sea level rise would have on Marin more broadly and here in San Rafael. The city is invited to respond. And so we've provided a draft recommended response to that grand jury report. Without going through reading each finding and each recommendation, I'll just emphasize the main points here. So the first finding recommended a comprehensive countywide agency to effectively address the impacts of sea level rise here in Marin County. So recommending a response of partially disagreeing. Of course, a comprehensive approach is ideal. But there are differences in the jurisdictions, physicality, a lot of different contextual features that should be accounted for. And also because this ongoing study is underway to evaluate different governance of and funding models. Recommend awaiting the results of those, of that, of that project. Before sort of taking a definitive position on, on the best governance and funding approach. Similarly, the second finding along those same lines. Found that to be effective, a countywide agency created to address sea level rise in Marin County should include the county of Marin, all cities and towns, and appropriate special districts in Marin County as funding participants. And again, a suggested response of partially disagreeing until awaiting the findings and recommendations that would come out of the, the county's ongoing response. Finding three found that a complete failure to create and implement effective countywide sea level adaptation projects in Marin County will result in significant damages and losses to commercial and residential properties as well as infrastructure, both public and private. Recommending a responsive agreeing, those impacts would be particularly acute in San Rafael. And of course, across jurisdictional work, it'd be necessary to, to adequately address those. For finding four, they found that the 2034 deadline imposed by recent state, state legislation would, to submit an official sea level rise plan is too little, too late from Marin County. And delaying action until then will expose the Bay Area to unnecessary flooding risks, financial and other losses. Recommend agreeing and of course, suggest working as expeditiously as possible. Particularly for East San Rafael, which is already lower than the highest tides we currently have. And of course, with any amount of sea level rise and additional subsidence, those impacts become more acute. Finding five found underrepresented populations reside in areas that are severely vulnerable to sea level rise. Because they're in low lying ground, again, agreeing. And that equity considerations must be at the forefront of all adaptation investments. Particularly as communities such as East San Rafael have a significant life safety and displacement risk today. Finding six is that sea level rise plans to be developed by a countywide entity should include adaptation strategies that directly apply to underrepresented communities in low lying areas with great exposure to sea level rise, such as the Canal District, Arizona, Nevada, Marin City and others. Again, agreeing of course, that investment should be prioritized in underrepresented communities that are most exposed, including the canal. But given that ongoing study about the best way to address these issues, recommend awaiting the findings of that report. There were three recommendations in, in the grand jury report. In the interest of time, I, I won't read them all. But they directed the board of supervisors in collaboration with the, the cities and towns to take certain actions. Because those three recommendations were directed towards the board of supervisors. Recommend a response that simply acknowledging that we don't have the authority to direct the board of supervisors to implement this recommendation. But again, through that participation in the ongoing study and the stakeholder engagement that will be part of it. There is quite a lot of room to weigh in and, and shape the ongoing study around governance and funding. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lovely presentation. I'm sorry, the room wasn't still full to see all the slides, everything else. That was fantastic. Questions on this item? Not seeing questions. Would the public like to comment on the grand jury report? Yeah, welcome.
Albatery Gersel Park. The opportunity zone and the flood zones are in the same area. That seems to me like there's something we're not getting in the way of reaction to this, to encourage people to develop in an area because it's undervalued. And then knowing full well that in before 2034, the sea level rise will, you know, rise up into their garages. And, and, and I don't really care about that. The developers. They're not going to get hurt, I'm sure. What I worry about is the city is going to probably have to pay something to recover from this. They're going to take on a great expense at the, so somebody else can make a buck, basically is what I'm saying. And I think that's a bad idea. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone. I will close the public comment, bring it back. I, I just had a few comments made. I don't know if my, my colleagues will as well. But I'll jump in by saying on F four, so, and that has to do with the SB two six, two seventy two that was passed by the state. It says we have to have sub regional plans. So I just wanted to further underscore that I am a part of the B C D C elected official task force. So have been part of those regional wide conversations. Kate has been on the technical part of those conversations. We're all required to do that, to, all of us as jurisdictions. And really appreciate staff's work to have whatever comes forward, whatever is required by those plans is things, is things that we can address. So. I just wanted to add that because it's a regional adaptation. I know the sea level rise, they really focused on local, but they're tied together. And then you did mention, which I had mentioned in my opening comments that both Councilmember Mike and I participated on the Bay Wave group and we've seen from ACOM. And so we're very much. It might not be, and I agree with the partially disagree because it's not formalized yet because they're starting to do the work. So we are at the table and part of those conversations. So I wanted to add those comments. Were good. Any additional comments? Okay, not seen any, then I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the City of San Rafael's response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report titled Sea Level Rise, The Water Is Upon Us, We Cannot Run, We Cannot Hide.
Thank you. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorenz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you. And with our theme of having a variety of topics tonight, we are moving on to the sidewalk repair program update. Welcome, Jonathan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Kate. Councilmembers, Jonathan Schallin, Deputy Director over at Public Works. Thank you for having me here. I apologize as I egregiously broke all PowerPoint rules with very text heavy slides. But I think as Councilmember Kurtz.
Just don't read them all.
The detail, the devil's in the details, but thankfully the details are also in the staff report. So I'm just going to do a summary of each slide as we go through and can answer any questions afterwards. So. We'll dive in here. There's a combination of history and some specific results that we're going to cover here. Going back to 2016 outreach to discuss the sidewalk repair program, which for context is just providing the city helping provide some financial support for property owners to fix and repair broken sidewalks, usually as a result of tree roots pushing up the sidewalks and to reduce any trip fall hazards. So. 2016, a lot of community outreach took place. 2017 is when the initial program went into effect. Some details of the phase one sidewalk repair program, you have the nice little graphic illustration there on the right hand side. But essentially it covers 50% of the cost share up to a thousand dollars by the city. And the rest of the costs will be covered by the property owner. And this is for anything that's over two inches. Anything that's under two inches displacement, meaning a difference from one sidewalk to the next level is usually handled by a sidewalk shaving, which is a lot more cost efficient. You don't have to reduce or tear up anything. And you get a lot more life, maximum lifetime out of that concrete square. So that's a lot easier solution in those instances. We also assist in the inspection and we waive the permit processing. We're really trying to remove as many barriers as possible to improving our sidewalks. So some phase one stats averaged about a hundred a year in the first four years. Our average reimbursement, as you can see, is over a thousand dollars because not only do we cover up to a thousand dollars on the sidewalk. We are using this opportunity to improve our curb and gutter. And that we cover a hundred percent of the cost. We'll also cover a hundred percent of the shaving, as I mentioned before. And also, as I mentioned, the trees are usually the cause of the problem. So we either trim the root system when we bring up the sidewalk. Or we replace, tear out that tree if it's a problematic tree and replace it with a tree that's going to cause less problems. And the city will cover a hundred percent of that cost. So usually our reimbursement to the property owner is over a thousand dollars during that phase. So some challenges of phase one. Some of the constraints was it was staff led. We selected one contractor. We had to follow our procurement policies and procedures in that selection. And as a result of that, it was a big burden on staff time. They had to coordinate with the property owner. They had to coordinate with the contractor. We had to go at a kind of a very methodical process throughout the whole program. As a result of that, you had people that would drop out and therefore staff time lost on something that didn't actually provide an output to the community. And then you have the back, the constraint of the contractor themselves. They were only working in a sequential method. So it was kind of neighborhood by neighborhood. So it was a pretty limited bottleneck in that structure where staff was leading the program. So as a result of that, we moved into what we called phase two of the program, April of 2022. And use those learnings. The really big flip there was put it more on the property owner to take ownership of the program and the process. That took our staff time down a lot, allowed any contractor to be used because it was the property owner selecting the contractor. And also kind of, you know, spread it out in participation across the entire city. Now, the other big benefit of this was in the first process. The city was leading and therefore the city was paying the contractor and then trying to recoup costs from the participant. This way, the phase two program actually had the property owner paying the contractor and the city providing reimbursement to them. So it alleviated those late invoices or even unpaid invoices from property, from participants of the program. One note is the reimbursement rate did stay the same from phase one to phase two. We didn't change any of the dollar amounts. That's what the council had authorized. So we stuck with that moving forward. Some stats from phase two, you can see participation dropped. Part of that was there was a huge amount of community outreach initially in 2017. So there's a lot of awareness, excitement for the program. But also, as you are all aware, costs have gone up, but our reimbursement rate has not. So there are participants that find out about the program, but you know, decide not to follow through or not to reach out to us because they know the cost is, is a lot more than what it had been before. And those are some numbers for our, our now updated costs, which have all over, more than doubled. So that brought to, brought to, brought us to this current moment where we have the four questions here to answer. What is the overall goal of the program? How do we address phase one invoices of people that were late or still haven't paid? How do we meet the current, you know, change in prices? Our reimbursement amount hasn't changed. And then finally, we have come into this unique situation where there's one property owner that is participating in the program. But a tree doesn't stay on just one property line. The roots can cause problems to nearby properties. And sometimes those owners, while we, you know, try to get them to participate in the program, choose not to or don't want to participate. So how do we address those situations as a city? Recommendations going into what we're recommending as a third phase. That second bullet, continue the voluntary program, but really that first one is what we kind of want to push more on is becoming more proactive targeted approach. Our previous approach was entirely involuntary. We waited for people to reach out to us or maybe a lot of times it was our single contractor that drove a lot of the awareness and let us know and let the property owners know. We don't have that vested single contractor in the game anymore because now it's proliferated across all the contractors. So there's less awareness by the contractors to, you know, drive the property owners to participate. But with this approach, we'd also be able to target areas that, you know, safe routes to school, maybe more tripping hazard, walkway pathways. So with this more proactive approach, we could probably get more participation, more dollars in return on that investment. By maximizing where we're putting that time and energy into. Number two, increase the allowable reimbursement amount, going from one thousand to two thousand dollars. This will, one, kind of just catch us up to the times with inflation, but two, increase that acceptance by property owners. Especially in that proactive approach where we're now going out and looking for places to fix, especially in those, you know, high, high volume or walkway areas. And then along with that, authorize a CPI increase up to a maximum of three and a half percent is what we're recommending. So that it continues to grow with the times and doesn't get outdated again. Third question answers recovering phase one costs. Initiate a 90 day grace period with another round of invoices. And then coordinate a collections approach with the rest of the city as a citywide approach to some other fines and reimbursement amounts that we're looking for. And then finally, for those properties that don't want to participate, we recommend fix and bill as opposed to do nothing or fixing and paying for it out of the city funds. This is, this is authorized in San Rafael Municipal Code, chapter eleven dot sixty. Where it does put the onus on the property owner, the adjacent property owner, they are responsible for property upkeep of the sidewalk and they are liable for any trip and fall hazards. But we all recognize everybody ends up getting, you know, sued if there's a trip and fall. And as a city, we just want to do what's best for our community and improve those sidewalks. So we're recommending to, in those instances, we become aware of a need for repair of those sidewalks. We encourage the property owner to participate. We give them every incentive to do so, but when it becomes an opportune time to do that repair. We partner up with the nearby repair being, taking place and make those repairs and then bill the property owner afterwards. And that is it.
Did the perfect balance of reading the, the high points on all of that. So thank you. Cause this, it really is in the, the details. I will turn. Question, Councilmember Bushy.
One, one specific question. In the fix and bill scenario, do you add an additional charge for your time of, of billing?
That's a great question. We have not factored that in. That was not factored into phase one of the program when we were leading it and billing as a result. But that is another one that we could take into account with our, our fee study as well that's taking place here too.
Right. And that, because we don't want to repeat what happened in phase one. So we want to encourage these people to have a financial incentive to participate initially rather than to get, get billed. So.
Certainly.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Councilmember Yorenz Galati.
So you talk about like when there is a tree and, you know, so I guess the owner will also have to, if they have to take the, the tree down.
So the city will cover the cost of tree root trimming or tree replacement. So the city has been covering it 100%. So the city has been covering 100% of those costs.
Okay. And what if you have like a PG&E pole in the middle of the sidewalk?
So any public right-of-way coordination would happen through Public Works and our permitting process. So that's another question that, you know, I could probably, there's a whole quorum of Public Works officials here that would be able to participate and answer that question.
Welcome, Director Miller.
Hi, April Miller, Public Works Director. So typically, when this program started with sidewalks that are being lifted up due to trees, typically, we don't see utility poles uplifting trees. But if there are, if there is a utility pole, sometimes we'll look at, you know, whether the sidewalk is accessible. So whether it meets the minimum requirements for ADA. And that's usually where we would look at maybe widening the sidewalk. So that's typically the case when we're dealing with the joint poles is whether or not we want to make the sidewalk ADA. So we'll add an extra half a foot so you can get the minimum 42-inch clearance there. But, but usually, we don't, we try not to touch the poles, so we don't need permits. But if there is that case in our, we'd work with our encouraged permit team, utility companies.
I know one of them, so I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one more question. So you know, sometimes when you're fixing things, it's actually getting a contractor to do the job. I don't know if it's would be helpful to have a list of contractors that they can do the job within a period of time. I don't know what you think about that.
Yeah, so we, we do frequently get asked for our recommendations. We shy away from providing any recommendations, but we do let them know that contractors, the list of contractors that have performed the work in the past that have met our, you know, inspection requirements and expectations. But we try not to provide any, you know, opinion on the matter in terms of these ones have met our expectations and have been able to pass inspection.
That makes sense.
And then obviously, finding, finding the guidance of certificate, certified with the state, registered with the state and so forth.
Right, great. Thank you. Thank you. Questions, yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. Is there any difference in the program for a multi-unit residence versus a single resident? Single unit residence?
Yes.
Say that, single home residence?
There is a slight difference in the amount of compensation that was allowed, I believe, in, let me go back to. So the big difference would be if there's any like driveway apron. It's actually more expense put on the property owner. We won't cover any of the driveway apron parts of the concrete except for the sidewalk that goes across it. And they're responsible for 100% of that curb and gutter. Other than that, our reimbursement rates stay at 1,000 or would double to $2,000 on the actual sidewalk. It's just they're larger properties, so we end up reimbursing more because of the length and replacement work of trees and such.
Great, thank you. Thank you, I just have one quick question. You talked about outreach, how in the very beginning, the program had a lot of pickup because there was a lot. So is there any outreach that's going with this? Or is it going to be using our usual channels, the Snapshot? I, I'm just curious if there's other outreach.
Yeah, so once we have direction, we plan to do increased outreach as well as incorporating more of our, you know, advancing tools and communication with Snapshot, See Click Fix, updating the website. But there's no public workshop planned at this point.
Okay, okay. We'll see if there's a need for that. But yeah, getting the word out would be critical, especially with the increase in the reimbursement amount. I think that will really be compelling. Okay, not seen any further questions at this time. I'll open this item up for public comment. Any members of the public like to comment on this item? Now is your chance.
Alvataria Gersel Park. Only at a self-interest, I bring this up. There is a, one of my neighbors, lovely neighbor, is a great person. And their sidewalk, it's like, I don't know what you call it, the tiles, there's like eight tiles, six tiles. And every one of them is cracked. And it, and it's like real thin, it's almost like they didn't pour enough cement. And the question I have is, could somebody suggest to the city that they should fix their sidewalk? Or do we wait for, you know, someone to fall and get hurt? That, that's my question. Because I would like to see that get fixed. It seems there's quite a few people on my block who are advanced age and having to walk on that might be an issue for them, is an issue for them. One, and two, if your neighbor, two people on adjacent properties have a need, do they, could they get like a discount because there's a larger piece done at one time rather than two pieces done individually? Since I assume there's some kind of a setup cost associated with just getting there. That's my only two questions.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yep, welcome.
Just real quick, interesting program. Are there any trends for certain communities who voluntarily participated in this?
Thank you. Not seen any other members of the public. I'll close the public comment and turn it over to staff to answer the questions about, what if your neighbor isn't taking care of their sidewalk? And the other questions that you just heard.
Yeah, so the first question regarding neighboring properties, a shameless plug opportunity for our See Click Fix platform. It's a great opportunity for you to go public. Anybody in the public can go in and provide reports for a sidewalk repair or any type of, any type of public infrastructure request for repair. So those are seen by our staff routed to either, you know, engineers or maintenance staff as well as the program manager for the sidewalk repair. And in those instances, we will then follow up usually with a notice to the property owner for them, making them aware of the need for a repair. So it is a way to kind of kick off that chain reaction for us becoming aware as well as making the property owner aware of their personal and property liability related to that sidewalk. To the second, to the second question, two units next to each other. That is actually one of the driving factors of why we opened up that bottleneck to multiple contractors. We have seen properties band together and do their, you know, whole length of sidewalk for a lower cost per sidewalk square because they're all there. And that's also what we would probably try to, try to obtain cost savings. In the event that we fix and repair, we would do it in batches to reduce that cost on the, on the city as well as the property owner. So definitely some cost savings in, in batching your work done.
No, yeah. If there are any follow-up questions after this item, you can always email and we will send it to Jonathan for response. Okay.
And then finally, for the neighborhood, there is, we're now gathering better data with the See Click Fix platform on neighborhoods voluntarily participating in the program. We do see that, you know, it's not always reflective of maybe the highest need neighborhoods or the, you know, highest traffic neighborhoods, but often the ones that have, you know, residents, property owners that have the time to voluntarily participate in the program. So hence the recommendation for that third proactive approach where we can start taking that extra measure to try to get more properties involved in this program.
Fantastic, thank you. I will turn to my colleagues for additional comments before motion. Councilmember Bushy.
No comments.
Okay, Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
No comments. Great report.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll just say we are supportive of this proactive targeted approach and appreciate reviewing the program. Sometimes when we start a program, it takes additional time to go back and to pull the data and to bring forward something new, and that's what you did this evening. So very excited that we're going to have a program that represents the needs that are out there today. I would entertain a motion on this item, please. Wait, wait to your.
I remember that we approved the sidewalk repair program as permanent program and authorized a $1,000 increase in allowable reimbursement amount for a new total reimbursement of up to $2,000 in fiscal year 2024-25 with an allowable yearly increase tied to the consumer price index up to a maximum of 3.5% a year.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries for zero. Thank you, Jonathan. He's already left. Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome, Sean. He, Sean will be joining us to discuss fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget amendments.
Thank you, thank you. I was, I was a late substitute, so forgive my casual appearance here. Speaking for the Finance Department, we're here with the resolution adopting amendments for the purpose of confirming authorized appropriations and transfers for fiscal '24. There are four, oh, before I start, I should say, we normally come to you in September with this report in conjunction with the unaudited year-end results. What we're trying to do is, is bring these to you earlier before the year-end is closed, while we're in the active period. So hopefully, next year, you'll get this even sooner. But anyway, there are four, there are four amendments in the report. And I'll just go through them really quickly. The first one is for the Safe Team. We're asking for $300,000 be transferred from the Cannabis Fund over to the General Fund. That's the remainder of funding for the, the Safe Team for the year. They incurred about $650,000 in expenditures this year, of which $250,000 was a, was a grant from the county. And then there was opioid settlement money covering the difference. So the transfer won't exceed $300,000 for this year. And then going the other way out of the General Fund would be a regular transfer of, of a third of the Measure E dollars that, that in excess of the debt service on the, on the public safety bonds, on the essential facility capital service bonds. And that's in $450,000. That will go to the 420 to support those essential facilities capital projects. And then in addition to both revenues and expenditures in the, in the wildfire fund, and that's just supporting the wildfire team. They had additional work, contract work that's fully reimbursed by the JPA. And we just need to make sure that there's appropriations there for the expenditure and then we get the reimbursement, no net effect. And lastly, very small, the Police Department gets a annual vest grant. And then they budgeted that amount in their equipment. So this is moving that from equipment into transfers out in the General Fund and transferring it into the Grants Fund where it was expended. So those are the four budget adjustments contemplated for year-end. And then we'll be back later this year with the unaudited or audited results.
Thank you, Sean. I will turn to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Yurans Gulati, Bushy, Kurtz. So sync, we don't have any questions, so I'll open it up to the public if they would like to comment on this item. Not seen any, I will close the public comment and bring it back. And appreciate, really appreciate how the Finance Department, our Director Navazio and you and the rest of the team are bringing it forward sooner because it does help paint that accurate picture. It's close to real time, we can never have real time, but it's close to real time. So that, that's really helpful for us to make policy decisions that are tied to our budget. So thank you. And unless there are additional comments, I would entertain a comment, a motion.
Adopt a resolution, adopting amendments to the fiscal year FY 2023, '24 budget for the purposes of confirming authorized appropriations and transfers.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries for zero. Thank you so much. And our last item, the pavement maintenance project fiscal year 2024-25. People always want to know when their street's going to get paved. So I am glad that you have this on the agenda, saving the best for last. So welcome.
Last but not, not least, for sure. Hi, councilmembers. My name is Gray Schenkel-Melgarde. I'm an Associate Civil Engineer with the Department of Public Works. I'm also the pavement management programmer for the city. I'm here tonight to talk to you about that program as a whole and give you an update on the pavement maintenance project that is scheduled to be upcoming in the next couple of weeks. Just a little bit of background, when we are talking about the health of our roadways, we are often referring to a road's PCI or Pavement Condition Index. This is on a scale of zero to 100, 100 being brand-new roadway, it's never even been looked at, and zero being a roadway that is near or experiencing a structural failure. Just some overarching numbers, California's average PCI is around 66. It's in that at-risk category. Bay Area is around 67, Marin County is at 66, and here in Santa Rafael, we're right around 62. The caveat I will throw on to the Santa Rafael number is that this number is from the winter of 2022. We are currently in the process of updating our PCIs with our consultant and will hopefully have some new numbers for you shortly. President, pavement preservation 101, we're looking for the right treatment for the right pavement at the right time. In this graph here in the bottom left, it's looking at these S-curves that represent a very standard deterioration of a roadway given time. And what we have seen is that if we continue on this blue line on the top and take active preservation efforts over the course of the roadway, on average, we're looking to spend maybe $1 to $2 per square foot versus if those roadways deteriorate to a point where we need more major rehab or reconstruction, we're looking more in the $6 to $8 range per square foot. Over the last couple of years, City Santa Rafael's focus has definitely been on preservation efforts to kind of keep our roadways where they, you know, good. Looking back, I won't go through all of this. This presentation will be on the pavement website that we maintain as well as the QR codes down in the bottom right-hand corner. But these are just the last three years of this pavement maintenance project, the associated dollar amounts and the volume of treatment for each of those years. We do other things with paving just outside of our pavement project. Some examples are Bungalow in Woodland got some minor concrete repairs a couple of years ago. Francisco Boulevard had some resurfacing. Our Third Street Rehab Program had paving associated with that. Jacoby had some additional patchwork. And then most recently, the Grand Ave Cycle Track had some pavement. So there is work just beyond these pavement maintenance projects that is helping with that PCI of the city. Onto this year, I know this is why everyone's here. The 2024-2025 pavement maintenance project is a mixture of the slurry and microseal. We are anticipating construction to be between September and October of this year. And one of the things I really wanted to point out is, and we take this to like BPAC to have a conversation with them, is we really try to take the opportunity to improve or highlight some of our striping on our roadways when we do these projects. So for example, high-visibility crosswalks, especially on First and Greenfield for this year, those greenback sharrows to help really draw attention to a shared bike lane. In addition, we have the Assembly Bill 413, which is related to the no parking zones near and around marked and unmarked crosswalks. So taking those opportunities with these projects as we can. Looking at the annual program, overall, the budget is about $3 million. The pavement maintenance project awarding contingency is at 1.9 for this year. Additionally, we have those other projects that fall into our annual program. So Fremont Marquod is looking at getting some concrete repairs. We have a joint effort with the county for Point San Pedro Road this year. We have a dig-out project, which is focused on that future PMP preservation effort. Center Street is getting some curb ramps. And then one thing that is not held within the annual program, but is kind of separate, is our city-led sidewalk repair program. And what that really allows us to do is to update some of our curb ramps around the city to be ADA compliant so that future generations of this maintenance project can have more extensive treatment efforts. Another shameless plug for our See Click Fix. It's linked here on the right with a QR code. This allows DPW to respond to safety concerns related to our roadways that may not be addressed during the pavement maintenance project on an ongoing effort. And allows us to maintain that transparency and accountability on our side. And just some fun figures for you, the Streets Team for DPW filled over 300 potholes last year and had all 5,000 of our catch basins inspected and cleaned, which is pretty impressive. So what's next? As I said before, we are working to update our PCI numbers and that will include a three-to-five-year plan, which will focus on those preservation efforts that we're continuing as well as any future rehabilitation efforts that some of our roads might need. And we're really focusing on trying to get those roads into a 70-year cycle, seven-to-10-year cycle. As always, we're exploring opportunities to stretch our dollar amount, seek grant opportunities when we can and partner with development, utility and other agencies to help expand our scopes. Continue to build more transparency in our process and continue to optimize our in-house maintenance efforts with See Click Fix. That is the end of that. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Gray, and welcome because I think this is the first time presenting to the council, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. That was excellent and your staff report was really thorough. Turn to questions. Yeah, Councilmember Yurans Gulati.
Yes, thank you, a great report. So I have a question about, what is the name of the street? Is. Yes, thank you. Uh, great report. So I have a question about, um, what is the name of the street? Is, um, is it Eirwin? Like when you're going from DuBois crossing Anderson into, uh, Eirwin. Is Eirwin, right? Sorry.
Well, just ask your, ask your question.
Okay, my question. So, um, I noticed that sometimes we have businesses that they use like heavy trucks, and the roads get more damaged than other streets. Um, is there anything, like, because we are talking about like partnering with other agencies, but what about like maybe some businesses? Do they have any relevance on helping funding for the roads? Because I assume they had to fix the driveways and the sidewalks, but the roads. So I, I guess that's my question.
So there's a couple of different fees we collect. One of them is like our construction impact fee. So if some of those businesses happen to be our contractors, and some of the contractors who are load bidders are in Santa Rafael, and so they do have to pay towards this construction impact fee, which then goes into our gas tax and then helps with our roadways. So it kind of indirectly does that. Uh, we have partnered with a couple of, you know, of those paving contractors, you know, to, you know, help pave some of the roads and, you know, we get low bids, so they really compete against each other, so sometimes that helps. But as far as, uh, businesses, I mean, it's really if somebody is doing a project in the street, that's usually when we partner with that business or that, that resident or the utility companies, for instance. I know a couple of years ago, one of the projects that that Gray mentioned was, uh, on Woodland, and that's when the sanitation district came in and needed to replace their main. But we knew that Woodland needed to be paved, so we did cost sharing, because they were already gonna have to pay for their trench plus over, it's called a T-cut, so you have to do the trench plus a couple of feet on either side. So we actually charged them that, and then we paid the rest of it, or of the roadway to help just with cost sharing. So that's kind of more of the opportunities that we see, uh, on partnering.
Great, great partnerships. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bushy. Okay, not seen any further questions. I'll open it up to the public for comments on this item. Now is your turn. If you're interested. Okay. Don't be shy. Come on down.
I have nothing else to do with the helm. When you compare the difference between slurry and whatever the alternative was, the change was from two dollars per square foot and eight dollars per square foot. And does that take into account the duration that each of those, uh, pavement options, uh, represents? Is it the slurry lasting as long as the other option, the full tar, I guess, is what you're doing? And then is it less expensive or the same expense for maintenance? Cause I, we, we always joke that the, um, that when I lived in New York, they would lay down new tar, and then another company would come in and, and dig a hole and, and do pipe work, you know? So then, and it would, then it would ruin the whole thing, because there was no way to re-level tar after it's been torn up. So my question is, is it cheaper to dig into slurry than it is to other things to save money that way as well, to, to extend on the savings that slurry might represent over full tar? That's all I had.
Thank you for your question. Oops, not seeing any other further public comment. I'll close the public comment and ask staff to respond to the cost benefit versus durability.
So the first part of that question, the two dollars versus the eight dollars, um, that two dollars is typically focused more just on the slurry. Slurry tends to be the cheaper option on our end. Um, that eight dollars is further past that micro when we're into more aggressive measures of rehabilitation. So just a point of clarification. Durability.
Yeah, so, uh, I guess one thing, I just want to clarify also with the difference between like slurry and really rehabilitation. So when, so for slurry, there's other things that we don't have to do. So once you go above a slurry, like a more extensive, like a micro surface or, or, um, grinded overlay, we actually have to upgrade all accessibility. And then it's, we're less likely to want to dig into it, so we're probably gonna replace our pipes and it, the cost per dollar, like I say, six to eight dollars, but the amount of money that we have to spend on the project just to do these other necessary things is probably another, you know, four dollars on top of that. So that's where we're really focusing on the preservation and the slurry. And so if we only spend a dollar or two a square foot every seven to ten years and the road stays in that good or, you know, s- area, then the road's gonna last a lot longer and it's gonna be a lot cheaper even if we're paying that dollar or two every seven to ten years. Um, as far as like digging into it, so there are utility companies that inevitably dig into our roads right after we pave. But we do put moratorium on some roads, like for instance, Third Street. I, I mean, there's not gonna be anybody digging in that for a very long time. I mean, I, I think it might be five years if we have on it. Um, but thankfully, we also combine that project with most of the utility companies, so they already replaced their lines, so they should be good. There's always the emergency case, and in those cases, if there's an emergency to pipe burst or something, we do allow somebody cut into the road, and they just have to do very extensive repairs. It's, you know, even if it's a two-foot-wide trench, they likely have to go from gutter to gutter, which is a lot of paving on a street like Third Street. So um, it's not easier necessarily. I mean, a slurry is, is really like a paint coat, so for a utility company to come in, it's gonna cost them the same to dig a trench on slurry that just had a paint coat versus the paving. So not really a cost benefit to them, it's just whether we let them, let a utility company dig into it, and then what, how extensive is the work we are making them or a developer pay because of the quality of the road.
Thank you. Excellent answer. Any additional questions? Um, how about some comments? Uh, Councilmember Bushy, any comments on this program?
Just that I have absolute confidence that one day Riviera Drive might be missed.
Councilmember Yiran Skoladi, any comments?
Uh, no, great report, and I look forward to seeing like all the new slurry. Um, I think it's one of the most rewarding visual things that the city does, that everybody's always so happy after they get so annoyed because you have to block the intersection, I guess, while you're doing it. But, uh, yeah, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz, comment?
Yep, just thank you. We know the community really appreciates this work.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I, it was not a shameless plug for See Click Fix, because what happens is people email us, and we keep saying, don't email us. We actually have a whole process, and it falls out of these policies, out of your priorities, and it goes through See Click Fix. So um, really appreciate that plug and reminding the community that there, there is a plan, and I appreciate the protect, how, the blue line, trying to keep our roads from getting worse, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of stretching our dollars in a way that makes, uh, the most sense over a long period of time. So, um, so thank you, and I'm not kidding when I say, I think we get emails at least once a month, all of us, about when's my street gonna be slurried or paved, as you just heard a pitch from the dais for, for, yeah, anyway. Um, okay, if there's no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion on this, and it is a very long motion.
I'll make a motion to approve plans and specifications for the, for the pavement maintenance project fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty-five, also referred to as City Project Number one, one, four, five, four, and the project deemed reasonable by the city engineer on file in the Department of Public Work. And award a construction agreement, the construction agreement for the project to Pavement Coatings Co. Authorize the city manager to execute the construction agreement in the amount of one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and authorize the city manager to amend the contract amount using contingency funds of two hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty for a total not to exceed amount of one point nine million dollars for the project. And appro- appropriate, uh, four hundred thousand from the gas tax fund two oh six for the construction agreement to supplement the previously appropriated amount of one point five million dollars from the gas tax fund two oh six, including the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty fifth, adopted budget approved on June seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Uh, uh, we know an engineer wrote this. Let me just say that. There is nothing that was in that action. So moved in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries for zero. Thank you. We have open time for public expression after we've gone through our business agenda. Um, if there's anyone who'd like to approach the council on anything not on tonight's agenda, now is your chance. Welcome.
Albaterry Gerson Park. I, I like to walk around the city. I enjoy living here, and I, I have to walk five miles a day for health, so uh, I get to go all over the place. And one of the places I went to was, uh, and I had to get my motorcycle, uh, maintained, so I was over in the canal area, and I was walking about, and I saw grass and, and weeds and, and bottles and glitter and, and over here by the, uh, the sanitation area, and then over by, uh, further down, there was another stack. I said, I gotta write this down. I gotta bring this back to the city council. And then while I was walking again, I came past the same area, and it was immaculate. And I was like, what? Have I been smoking? And it was, and I went to the, I must, I must have misremembered. I went to the wrong place, so I went to the other place. And that was immaculate, too. And I was like, hmm, something is going on here. So anyway, I was very impressed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We love public comment that compliments and recognizes the incredible work that DPW is doing out there to maintain our streets. Not seeing any additional public comment. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.